And those issues affect individuals who are committing crime. Our city attorney came out with a policy recently on gang enforcement to utilize Immigration Customs Enforcement where gang members are involved in criminal activity. So this misconception of the public which really creates special number forty that police can't enforce immigration laws, police are restricted from enforcing federal laws. What it simply means in layman's terms is when you're driving down the street, walking down the street, a police officer is not permitted to stop and ask you for your birth certificate or where you were born or your green card. That's what it means. It does not prevent the officer from stopping you for any type of crime, arresting you, and then following that contacting Immigration Customs Enforcement if need be and have something taken. People are arrested, forty some thousand people or one hundred and forty some thousand, well the numbers are staggering in Los Angeles annually. Many people are turned over to ICE and many times they come back. But we have the deputy chief who's here, who's sitting in the audience, who's willing to come up and comment on this, so I think we should hear it from representative from the Los Angeles Police Department, our newest deputy chief. If you'll come forward from the police perspective and to dispel the myth that special number forty is something evil that ties the hands of police when it comes to them doing their jobs to protect people of Los Angeles.
Good morning. My name is Sergio Diaz. I'm a deputy chief for the Los Angeles Police Department, the commanding officer of Operation Central Bureau. I've been designated by the department and the city attorney as the person most knowledgeable about special order forty. And I agree with the comments made by Councilman Zine and Councilman Weiss. In fact, special order forty is a policy adopted by the Los Angeles Police Department in 1979. And essentially it does two things. One is it's a general prohibition of our officers, against our officers initiating an investigation with the sole purpose of discovering a person's immigration status. The second thing that special order forty does, and by the way, a special order is a way that we have of changing our policy manual. The second thing that the special order did was to prohibit officers from arresting persons for illegal entry into the country, which is in fact a federal misdemeanor. It is true that we consider that special order forty was, is very effective in increasing the amount of cooperation and public trust of all our communities, but specifically the immigrant community, specifically minority communities.
And joining us now is District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine. Mr. Zine, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Pleasure being with you, Jack.
Before we talk about the impact of the federal legislation that's proposed, first tell us about special order forty. What does it do and just as important, what does it not do?
Well, special order forty, Los Angeles Police Department, is decades old. It prevents Los Angeles police officers from inquiring about an individual's status in the United States. In other words, an officer is not permitted to approach an individual and ask for their birth certificate or their place of birth. It simply prevents police officers from inquiring about what is federal immigration law. That's what it does. What it does not do is harass the public. It does not turn the police officers into immigration enforcement officers.
During the discussion on the council floor, of course, we heard a bunch of acronyms, INS, ICE, ICE. Most people have heard of the Immigration and Naturalization Service. What is ICE in that context now?
ICE is Immigration Customs Enforcement, ICE. With Department of Homeland Security, they have a number of different departments that have been established under the umbrella of Homeland Security, and ICE is referred to as Immigration Customs Enforcement.
How does special order forty make us safer and how long has it been in place, by the way?
Well, it's been in place for many years, decades. It makes us safer in that people who become victims of crime don't have to worry about the local police, the LAPD enforcing immigration laws. If someone's a victim of a robbery or any type of crime, they need to feel free to report that crime to the Los Angeles Police Department for investigation so the officers can arrest the individual that perpetrated that particular crime. What special number forty, it's misconceived by a lot of people. People think that the LAPD is prevented from enforcing the law, prevented from enforcing the penal code or the vehicle code. Simply, it means you're not going to be an immigration enforcement officer, a branch of the federal government. But what it does is permit individuals who are victims of crime, no matter where they're born, to report those crimes and for the LAPD to investigate.
Are there any other misconceptions the public might have about special order forty and police involvement in immigration issues?
Well, there's a lot of misconceptions. And the other misconception is an individual who is in the country illegally, in the city of Los Angeles illegally, and commits a crime, that individual is not only prosecuted through our criminal justice system, but ICE, Immigration Customs Enforcement, is notified. And through that notification, oftentimes people are deported. So individuals who are members of gangs, narcotics trafficking, et cetera, we enforce the immigration law against those individuals who are here in this country, in this city illegally, who are involved in criminal activity, whether it's narcotics or gangs or anything else. So the misconception is that if you're here illegally, you're not going to get arrested, you're not going to get prosecuted, and you'll continue to commit the crime. Law enforcement has an extra opportunity, not only the criminal sections that we enforce, but also the deportation. And many times, criminal aliens, people who are illegally and commit crimes, are deported through the resource of the federal government. And that's a common standing practice that's been in place as long as special order forty has been in place. So the misconception continues, and we're trying to clear that misconception and bring about reality.
I want to ask you a question about something that you touched on briefly a moment ago. Victims of crimes, witnesses to crimes, when they come forward, obviously they're going to be questioned, there'll be some investigation of the incidents that they want to talk about. Are you saying that no time during that interrogation would they be asked about, for example, their immigration status?
That's correct. Any victim or any witness will not be asked if they're here legal or illegal. Simply the elements of that particular crime, the investigation, that are detectives will follow up. The only time the place of birth, the status of the United States in the city of Los Angeles becomes an issue is when an individual is a suspect accused of a crime. Any type of crime, misdemeanor, felony, high-grade crimes, they are then inquired, there's an inquiry, and if it's determined that they are here illegally, Immigration Customs Enforcement, ICE is notified, and many times again, those individuals, the suspects, are deported.
Great, thanks for clearing that up. Now, if you would, tell us about the National League of Cities and the Immigration Task Force that in fact you lead for that group.
Yes, I was put in charge of the National League of Cities Immigration Task Force last year. And what we're trying to do is come up with a comprehensive plan for immigration enforcement in the United States. And National League of Cities has taken a position, by the way, National League of Cities represents large and small cities across America, everywhere from Los Angeles to New York, everything in between, taking a position that local police officers need to deal with local crimes, crimes that violate the penal code, the vehicle code, et cetera, that they're not immigration and customs enforcement officers. So the National League of Cities has taken a position that our local police have tremendous responsibilities, most of them are understaffed, and we need to focus their attention on the crimes that take place. That's the NLC policy. And as far as the task force, we've come up with what we believe is a comprehensive approach, border protection, to reinforce the border, to have employer verification, and to take the twelve-plus million individuals who are declared illegal in the United States and bring them into a legal status, not through amnesty, but individuals who are here on a visa and the visa expired, individuals who started a profession, they're no longer in that profession, a student visa. There's a number of the twelve-plus million people who are declared illegal who actually entered this country legally, but they're now declared illegal because their status changed. So there's three components of it. Fortify the border, the activity with the employer, verification through the federal government, through an opportunity to make sure that individuals actually here illegally. And then the third aspect. So we've got the three components to bring this about. So we're not going to just give amnesty and say, you're here, we're going to forget about it, you can remain here without any consequences. There will be consequences and there will be a process to bring those people into compliance, not citizens, but to bring them into compliance with the laws that we have here in the country.
When you say their status may have changed, you mean somebody who may have come here, for example, on a student visa and it simply expired, but they didn't leave the country?
Exactly, expired, or they didn't complete school, they dropped out of school, or someone who got married and then got divorced. There's a variety of factors that play into the situation where they're all in this big category of illegal. People want to think that they all snuck across the border, whether it be the border, Mexico, or the Canadian border, any other border. And when we talk about immigration in the city of Los Angeles, with all the languages that we speak, we've got immigrants that come here from all over the world. And people from Ireland sometimes enter this country, in this city illegally. So it's not just one particular group of individuals, it's all the groups. And we want to bring them into compliance for the benefit of citizenship, if they wish to pursue that, but at least to have a documentation to know who we have in this country with homeland, environment, the security that we have to have. So there's a variety of factors that bring this in. So hopefully Congress, hopefully the president with his influence, will bring this about. This has been lingering for a long, long time. We need to come to an end to bring, fortify the border, employer verification, and then bring those folks that are out of compliance into compliance, not through amnesty, but through a legitimate process.
A moment ago, you mentioned the National League of Cities policy, but do other cities in fact have a special order forty or something similar? And if so, how's it working for them?
Many of them do have that. Many of them have that just out of necessity, since they don't have enough police officers, they have that. And let me just explain briefly, special number forty. Every special order that the LAPD adopts goes into the department manual. So it's a special order for that particular area, then it becomes part of the policy within the police department. So they've tagged special number forty with this rule on immigration, but it's clearly policy within the city of Los Angeles and other jurisdictions throughout the United States.
By the way, before I forget, this federal legislation that's been proposed, do you think it has any realistic chance of passing and becoming law?
I sure hope so. It's been a seesaw back and forth. I was at Washington DC, testified before Congress on the impact that we have in the city of Los Angeles and urging Congress to move forward with it. We hope that Congress will do it. It seems that when it passes the House of Representatives and it doesn't go past the Senate, and then we know that our meetings with the White House representatives, congressional representatives from the US Senate, everybody seems to want to make it happen, but unfortunately it's not happening. Hopefully, before too long, we will have a comprehensive package that we can deliver to the American people and bring this into compliance, which has been way too long. It's been lingering way too many years, and we need to come for the final solution. And that rests with our federal elected representatives.
Oh, and by the way, during the council session on Tuesday, some state legislation was also discussed, as you know, legislation to help in controlling our gang problem by increasing asset forfeiture against members. Will we be able to actually collect money from gang members who break the law?
Well, we know that many gang members are involved in illegal enterprise, narcotics and other illegal activities, and hopefully that will hit them in the pocketbook, because we know many gangs thrive on the illegal activity, generate dollars. So this additional enforcement, this additional rules, regulations that we can enforce through the criminal justice system, hopefully will curtail a lot of the economy that they're in business for. We need to crush the gangs. The bottom line is gangs create terrorism, it's urban terrorism. We need to use all the resources that we can apply to bring them into compliance, and we just want people to live a comfortable, legal environment, whether you're a gang member or a good citizen, and those rules have to be enforced.
You also, of course, talked about a sentencing component. If this passes, how soon might we see our prosecutors employing tougher sentencing measures?
Hopefully, as soon as it passes. We know that our governor is appropriating additional dollars. We know that the county of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Police Department, they're all working to identify additional dollars to put into place, not only prevention, but apprehension and prosecution. It's got to be a multi-pronged attack, but we keep breeding new and new gang members, and we see the consequences, more and more violence, more shootings, more victims. So it's a comprehensive package that we need to put together, and hopefully this legislation will help bring that about. We spend a lot of money on preventive programs, and most of them aren't worth a darn. They don't work. We're analyzing that now in the city council. One of my colleagues, Tony Cardenas, is championing that cause to try and bring this into, which programs work and fund those, those that don't work, abandon those, and put your money where the best buck is made in the effective preventive programs and the effective enforcement programs.
Well, with your help, we'll be following it all here. District Three Councilmember Dennis Zine, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Jack, it's always a pleasure being with you. And to our viewers, watch thirty-five, all the news, that is news, channel thirty-five.
After debate, the resolution to oppose federal legislation that would prohibit or preempt local ordinances was approved in a vote of twelve ayes and one no. LA City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on channel thirty-five, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at two one three four seven three three nine seven eight. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at ten AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at ten AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June fifteenth, two thousand and seven. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at channel thirty-five, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I have one emergency.
How old is your daughter?
She's four years old. Her name is Danielle.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the watch commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think I'm going nuts if this is my dog.
Pusher, it's a seventy-five five, seventy-five five, two hundred and sixty-four, a little bit hard more, a little bit hard more than the child market. Suspect found in ninety-five eight, west side, five hundred yards, approaching, taking his courtesy. Code three.
Seventy-eight fifty-five, Roger.
All units, seventy-five, we're in pursuit of a two hundred suspect, southbound through the house, requesting backup. Any area in, Captain, I'm listening.
Stop, stop!
Every road.
Seventy-eight fifty-five, we're still there.
To protect and to serve.
All units, code four, eleven, the Catalina, suspect.
Standing with our community.
Los Angeles Police Department, this morning issued an Amber Alert. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
Let's go.
They take pride in what they do.
Okay, nine ten, code six hundred and eighty.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
It's a positive on the vehicle.
Roger. Five seconds, two, we have positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, channel thirty-five. Your city, your channel.[1015.85]
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for June 19, 2007. We meet here in John Furaro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month, in which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilman Jose Uizar, Councilmember Tom Labonge, and Councilmember Dennis Zine, as well as Councilmember Greg Smith. I want to thank them all for being here pursuant to our council rules on time. We are awaiting ten members, or two-thirds of our body, to constitute a quorum and to begin city business, so I'd like to call down the following council members to join us. Councilmember Jack Weiss is excused today; otherwise, we're expecting all members to be here. Councilmember Alarcon, if you will please join us. Councilmember Cardenas, if you will please join us. Councilwoman Gruel. Councilmember Hahn. Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Reyes. Councilmember Rosendahl. And Councilmember Wesson, if you will please join us as soon as possible. Again, thank you to Councilmembers Uizar, Labonge, Zine, and Smith for being here. We're broadcast live on Channel 35 through the city's cable system, L.A. City View, your city channel, and we also rebroadcast in the evening, and we welcome our viewers on Channel 35. We're also available online through the world wide web at lacity.org, and you can click through the links to get to live coverage via webcast. And you also now can take any of our past meetings and get video on demand, in which you're able to get any of the past council meetings or individual items from our past council meetings there on the Internet as well. Finally, we also are available through Council Phone, which is a service of the Information Technology Agency that allows us to call in and to listen via phone to any of our council meetings, as well as our committee meeting. That number is (213) 621-CITY. Again, (213) 621-CITY. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always testify remotely from Van Nuys for any of our general public comment or items which have been agendized for public comment. Agendas are available online, also at lacity.org, and agendas are available through the city clerk's office or here in council chambers. Those are usually posted seventy-two hours in advance, except for special items which are twenty-four hours in advance. Items are split into two categories, those for which public hearings have not been held, and those for which public hearings have been held. Every item receives either a public hearing in committee or in council. If it's already received a hearing in committee, it won't receive one here unless a council member reopens the public hearing. If it has not, any member of the public may fill out a speaker card in the back and give it to one of our sergeants-at-arms, and in doing so, will be heard by us. Also, for items that are general public comment, that is not on our agenda, but nevertheless, under our jurisdiction, you can also fill out a speaker card in the back. Lastly, we have council ambassadors in the back, who are local youth who are here, helping us and any of the members of the public who come here navigate through the way. If you have any questions about the council and its operations, please feel free to talk to one of our council ambassadors, and we thank them for their good work as well. Thank you again to Councilmembers Gruel, Uizar, Labonge, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We are now up to seven members, awaiting three more to constitute a quorum. This is a second quorum call. Councilmember Alarcon. Councilmember Cardenas. Councilmember Hahn. Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Reyes. And Councilmember Wesson, if you will please join us. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We're now up at eight, and awaiting two more members. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. This is a final quorum call. We are still awaiting one more council member. Councilmember Alarcon. Councilmember Cardenas. Councilmember Hahn. Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Wesson. I know Mr. Wesson is still chairing the Housing Committee, so he needs to stay up there, but if Ms. Perry or Mr. Cardenas can join us from the committee, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Hahn, sorry, Ms. Hahn, or Mr. Wesson, but I think most likely Alarcon, Hahn, Cardenas, Perry, please join us as soon as possible, or we will adjourn for lack of quorum. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Uizar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President?
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alarcon moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute that's been agendized.
Yes, if I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for a salute to the flag, our Pledge of Allegiance. And if I can ask Mr. Alarcon, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Next order of business.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take public comment. And we'll begin with Donna Pearlman out in Van Nuys. Good morning. Okay, we have a problem with Van Nuys. We are going to make sure we get to you in just a minute, Ms. Pearlman, but first, we have Chris Mattson here in chambers.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Chris Mattson. In March, I spoke before you to protest the appointment of Andy Fox as the Fire Department's Litigation Risk Manager, a position responsible for reducing lawsuits and large payouts from taxpayer funds. One week ago, a jury awarded $3.75 million to Captain Lima because he was retaliated against when he did not follow Andy Fox's unlawful instruction to make training exercises easier for women. I attended the Lima trial, and here are some things jurors told me after the trial was over. I hear that no one is listening, but I'll continue to speak.
We're listening, ma'am. Continue, please.
They said that the testimony of Andy Fox and other chief officers who testified was not credible. Many jurors wanted to award Captain Lima even more money, knowing full well that the funds would come from their own pockets as taxpayers. In March, I told you that the taxpayers would listen. I have faith in our criminal justice system. This jury was made up of an unbiased panel of twelve strangers who heard testimony from both sides. Their decision was a sound one. The size of the award, $3.75 million, was an unanimous one. But as I said, many of the jurors voted to award Captain Lima even more money, and if you read the transcripts, you'll know why. At the heart of this issue is public safety. The LAFD needs to be purged of officers who do not hold all personnel to LAFD standards and who endanger the safety of the public and courageous firefighters who have to rely on each other in life-threatening emergencies. I'm concerned with this because I have a son on the job. I rely on strong leaders like Captain Lima, who always put the safety of the public and firefighters above self-seeking, personal, or political gain. How much more evidence is needed before Andy Fox is removed as Litigation Risk Manager?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
And I'm submitting this in writing, if you don't mind.
Thank you. We'll give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, can grab that from you. Hold on one second, he's coming right around. Is Van Nuys set up? Okay, Oscar Johnson will be next here in council chambers.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oscar Johnson, proactive homeless for the city of Los Angeles, and I can see how on this 21st century, we still the victim of racism in America through our political system that's supposed to represent us but do not represent us, you know, in a proper way, but maybe in an illegal or corrupt way they can, but we've tried to go, we need a cleaner government. We need peoples in office that are respectable of all peoples, and I see the downtown Skid Row is getting worse and worse. People have no class of dignity in their life, they should be, get out the street, and I think we are violating our constitutional rights when we let citizens stay on the street just to receive money from them year after year. And I was surprised the other day when Ms. Maxine Waters spoke up against politics in race with the gang members in Los Angeles, said there was, you know, they were just using the gangs members and the homeless people just to keep getting money for their own interests, not against the, and they were not serving the will of people, because I see with our elected officials, maybe when they get in the office, they only respond to people that respond to them through their campaign thing, but if you're not part of their campaign or their issue, you're very neglected. And I think we should have some type of meeting with our official, though, so we can know that who is representing us. With the Fire Department and the Police Department, it seemed like they're a very fraudulent entity. It seemed like all the money goes to the department's head and stopped at the top, and the service on the bottom is, is, is no service almost to the community, that the Los Angeles Police Department do not serve the community of Los Angeles with any type of more, with any type of more discipline or any type of more work ethic in the Los Angeles situation, in the Los Angeles Department. And I was thinking maybe our Fire Department, our chief police, our Fire Department and our Los Angeles Police Department and the district attorney office should have random drug tests among their employees, their personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Have random drugs and alcohol tests for the city employees, for the district attorney office, the mayor office, and the police department, so we can know the type of people that have, that's in charge over us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. We still do have two public speakers out in Van Nuys. If they can sit tight, we're trying to address some technical issues, but Ms. Pearman and Ms. Brewer, we will return to you. Mr. Clerk, if we can run through the agenda now.
On the regular agenda, items one and two are street vacation items, notice for public hearing. Council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
There's no objection. Let's go ahead and instruct the city engineer to proceed on both of those items. Next items, please.
Item three is an item noticed for public hearing.
Okay, there's no card for that. We will open and close the public hearing on number three. Why don't we hold that on the desk until we have twelve members, as it's an ordinance? Next items, please.
Items four through twenty-six are items which public hearings have been held. Item four is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold number four on the desk, and let's hold five and six as ordinances as well. Colleagues, I would leave seven through twenty-six. Mr. Reyes?
Item number eleven, please.
Number eleven for Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, now's the time for special items, seven to twenty-six.
And, Mr. President, I understand there may be an amending motion on item ten. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's do that until... We now have twelve members with Ms. Hahn, so we can take up five and six with these items as well. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Labonge, we're right now five through twenty-six.
Number seven, I request you continue number seven.
Okay, for how long?
Two, thirty days.
Thirty days on number seven. Okay, that would take us to...
Number eight.
July twentieth.
Special on number eight, please.
And special number eight for Mr. Labonge. And I'm sorry, Mr. Labonge, also nine? Nine, okay. Mr. Parks?
I'd like to call number six special, and you held number ten.
Yes, number ten.
And also would like to, on number sixteen, if we just add one technical correction.
Do you want to say that right now?
Just the report back in ninety days.
Report back for ninety days on that, okay? There's no objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. Any other specials, colleagues? Nineteen for Ms. Hahn. Seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, on the balance, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved, including sixteen as amended. We can return to number three now that we have twelve members, please. And let's go ahead and open the roll on number three. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labonge? Oh, we've got the next one. Next, next items?
On number two.
Item three?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I asked about special. We'll go ahead and we'll reconsider that then. Go ahead, open the roll, please, on reconsideration for three. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is back before us. We'll call that special for Mr. Rosendahl.
Item twenty-four, special, thank you.
We passed twenty-four?
Special.
Okay, we're gonna need to reconsider that one as well. Please open the roll on reconsideration on twenty-four. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we'll call that special for Mr. Rosendahl. Next items, please.
Items twenty-seven through forty-eight are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Items twenty-seven through thirty are confirmation of various city officials. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the appointments of the commissioners and the general managers on the desk. We'll call this special, Mr. Labonge. We got all those special, twenty-seven through thirty.
And twenty-seven, very special.
Very special, all right. So noted. We also have cards on thirty-eight and forty-seven, so we'll call those special for cards in the public. On the remaining items, we will go ahead and open and close the public hearings. Other specials, colleagues? This is thirty-one through forty-eight left right now? Thirty-one through forty-eight, going once, going twice. Let's open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, can we ask forty-five, forty-six, go forthwith?
Forty-five and forty-six, forthwith, without objection, for Mr. Smith. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items forty-nine through fifty-one are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, we've already had public hearings on those. Would anybody like to call forty-nine through fifty-one special?
Fifty.
Fifty for Mr. Uizar? If nobody else would like to call forty-nine or fifty-one special, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fifty-two and fifty-three are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, I do not see public speaker cards on those, so we will open and close the hearing on that. Anybody wishing to call fifty-two or fifty-three special? Mr. Parks?
I just wanted to double check, did I miss forty-seven?
Forty-seven is special for cards.
Special, okay, very good. And we'd ask that, can we get that out of order? We have department personnel and the family here.
We add request for the commissioners and the general manager, but then we'll take that as the first regular item, if that's all right. So fifty-two and fifty-three, nobody wishing to call those special? Let's go ahead then and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. We can go back, do we have a connection with Van Nuys? Okay, we're gonna go back to public comment and get our last two speakers. Our apologies to you. Ms. Pearlman is first, and then Sharon Brewer will be second. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Pearman, Mr. Garcetti.
I'm sorry, it was written with pearl here, Pearman.
Okay. I'm Donna Pearman. Since I am Donna Pearman, a member of the Eric Garcetti fan club, I hope you see you re-elected president. First, I'd like to appeal to whoever is presiding president, including Garcetti, not to cut people off. Madam Councilwoman Gruel, cut off my friend Miriam with nine seconds remaining, and she wasn't singing aloud, councilmen, or yelling. Since I can't sing aloud, councilmen, I'll have to say to the city council, city council Weiss and the city council, I've heard from the attorney in my office, the people in your jurisdiction is trying to recall you. Perhaps because city council likes to take money from developers and shortchange the West Los Angeles transit, especially in, oh, especially in the West Los Angeles area. Well, the rabid transit must means it has rabies, not satisfactorily. It used to be a lot better. Now I have to stand a long time on Wilshire Boulevard to get the rabid 720. City council wants people to get out of their cars and take mass transit. I couldn't imagine the city council members with their nice suits and ties, which are cute, by the way, taking mass transit, or your friends at CRA taking mass transit. I have to take it or I can't get to work. Though MTA is own entity, I complain to them also. I heard councilmen talk about mass transit problems and appealed to you, Councilwoman Weiss and the city council, find out what you could do to fix the mass transit problems in West Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley, rabid transit. Don't tell me to call 311, I can't get through, it's beep, beep, beep. You care about us, not just the CRA and developers, you'll care about the bus riders, and not just close the roll, tabulate the vote, and twelve ayes, and go forthwith. And a steward in my office told me to tell Councilwoman Weiss and the city council, you're finishing politics, I hope you can get a real job. And by the way, you're very handsome today, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearman. I appreciate your kind comments, and thank you for resolving. I always got Pearlman and Pearman, I wasn't sure, so thank you for that. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. This is about Encino election that is June 28, 2007, nine days away. I ended up going and doing a public records request on June 8th for the, the Dunn-approved Encino neighborhood council election procedures. I had to do a public records request because Encino doesn't have a copy. I ended up having to remind them yesterday that their ten days were up, and the response that I got from Dunn was that we are in the process of gathering information to comply with your Public Records Act request, and that when they find, get the papers, then they'll let me know how much it costs and back and forth stuff. I sent back an email saying that the department has had this public records request for ten days, and now you're saying that you need to gather the information to comply with my public records request, and you will notify me as soon as you know the exact amount of the request, and then, when you are in receipt of my payment, the documents will be forwarded to me. Why hasn't the gathering of this information started immediately after receiving my request on June 8, 2007? And according to the Public Records Act, only in unusual circumstances can the time limit ten days be extended. I asked them to please explain what those unusual circumstances are, and I have yet to even get an acknowledgement that they received it. I also sent something to Carol Thorpe, and that I have not gotten a response from her since my email of May 29th, where I said there was a need to postpone this election. And if it takes... These election procedures were supposed to be approved by Dunn March 31 of '07. Why do they need to take and gather the information now, when they were supposed to be approved over two months ago, and this election needs to be postponed because it's not in compliance? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Our last speaker for public comment is here in council chambers, Michael Carrion. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. I'd like to make sure that this is understood from the beginning. I'm addressing the council, not Mr. Uizar, but the council. I'd like the council to be aware of the actions of Mr. Uizar's office, since Mr. Uizar's too busy in the conversation. His office had guaranteed me that they would have some work done by July, I mean, June 1st. His own Jose Avila, Joe Avila stood here and stated to me, he guaranteed me that some trees would be done by June 1st. He didn't care what anybody else said, it would be done. But this is the kind of service we get from Councilman Uizar's office, none. We get lies, we get deceit, we get a bunch of BS, because people come to us and tell us, yes, sir, this will be done in a timely fashion, and it's not done. Not even a courtesy call, once I called and says, it's fifteen days overdue, why isn't it done? Not even a courtesy call from Joe Avila stating that it wasn't gonna be done. One of, someone else called me and said, oh, he made a mistake. But Mr. Avila made it very clear, I'm in charge here. It will be done by June 1st, not July. And I made it clear to him that his other staff said it would be July, and he said, no. Well, June 1st is come and gone, and nothing's been done. Mr. Uizar, I've sat here, excuse me, councilman, I've sat here and spoken with Mr. Uizar in different occasions. I've given his staff enough rope to hang themselves, and they did. Once again, we're here with nothing being done in the El Surino community. Everything is focused to Boyle Heights. His staff does not care about my community, and I am passionate and I am tired of waiting on broken promises. I had a guarantee that something was gonna get done, and it didn't get done. Everybody wants to know who I spoke to. I spoke to Mr. Avila, and if you want to speak to me, I will be right here.
Thank you for your comments today. That closes our general public comment. We can go to the first of the commission items, please, commissioner items.
Item four is the reappointment of Mr. David Malcolm Carson to the Board of Transportation Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Carson, if you'd like to come forward, and I'd like to recognize the chair of, Mr. Uizar, did you want to say it? Yeah, before that, Mr. Uizar?
President, I, for the record, I'll go speak to this gentleman who just spoke. I did see this gentleman at an El Surino event this weekend, didn't raise any issues to me, and I just want to clarify to my colleagues that I have been speaking to this gentleman. I'll go speak to him right now, and for a number of times that I've been speaking to him, I'll go speak to him again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we certainly... Thank you, and we certainly have seen that before, thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And Ms. Gruel is the chair of our transportation committee, I'd like to recognize her at this time on the nomination.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to stand and rise to thank Mr. Carson for his last year and a half of service to the commission. I know when he first came in to meet with me, he was very excited about all the things that he was going to be able to do as a commissioner, has been someone who has been, I think, engaged on issues. We just chatted the other day in committee about ways in which we can address an issue that is important to everyone in the city of Los Angeles. It doesn't matter where you live in the city, how old you are even, because my son talks about traffic. It affects all of us, and this commission is so vitally important as we talk about how we can improve transportation, and I just wanted to thank him for his commitment in the last year and a half to serve on the commission and look forward to his next term as well, and give you an opportunity to really share with us what kinds of things you learned in this last year and a half, and kind of your plans for the upcoming two years.
Thank you, councilmember Gruel, I really appreciate your words of support. It's been a pleasure to serve on the Transportation Commission. In terms of things that I've learned, you know, probably the first thing, I'm sure you know better than anybody else, is how complex and difficult it is to figure out how to move forward on some of these questions, and, you know, our agenda there is always just chock full of items, and just to even be able to get past the items that require our immediate attention and move on to a bigger picture type of thing is sometimes even a challenge. I'm sure the city council also feels that way. And in terms of my plans, I guess that's what I would wanna see the focus, you know, moved towards. I think what LA needs in the area of transportation right now is something really dramatic. So we need to take a look at the bigger picture and see if we can figure out something that we can do in this city that everybody will feel. You know, I think we get caught up in the process here, where people who are in City Hall all the time and dealing with all the minutiae of trying to figure out solutions, and I think for people who aren't here, it doesn't look like much is happening. You know, there's ideas about a rail system, and the red buses that are running around town seem a lot more convenient, and, you know, there's definitely progress being made, but nothing really to grab people's attention, and I think that, I think we need to maybe, you know, sit down with, you know, maybe academics and community members and neighborhood folks and engineers and planners, and see if we can figure out some way of really having an impact on the situation in general. You know, one of the areas, I think, in particular, that I'd like to draw some attention to is kind of providing, maybe if we could disincentive the car and use any funds we raise by that to provide further incentives for public transit, maybe that would get more people out of their cars. And, you know, there's ideas around congestion pricing systems, and we talked about at the meeting. And there's also, as a transportation commission, we're responsible for the parking revenue fund, and I know we have legal constrictions right now on what that fund can be used for, but I would think that if we really got some people together to think hard, maybe we could find some funds through increased parking charges and maybe use that to offset the cost of transit, and therefore, you know, provide a better incentive for people to actually, you know, use transit. And just to close, I'll say something I know probably everybody in this room would hate me for, but the first place that we should really start thinking about incentivizing transit and disincentivizing the automobile is right underneath this building here, where all of us have free parking, and that provides a huge disincentive for all of us to really use transit, and maybe, you know, to lead by example, maybe we should think about not having free parking at City Hall for anybody.
We, and thank you, and you're right, a lot of people come visit us, get the free parking. We actually pay for our parking, as part of our payment, we actually pay for that parking and the city employees, and so we've tried in that way, but it is looking at some of those creative ways. So I just wanna thank, because he's not afraid of taking on some big issues, and thank him for his commitment to the city and willingness to serve on the Transportation Commission again, so look forward to working with you, and encourage all my colleagues to support our commissioners in their efforts and take public transportation. I know you do, Mr. Carson.
Absolutely. Mr. Zein and I went to Langer's on Friday, in Mr. Reyes's district, to celebrate the sixtieth anniversary on the subway. Mr. Labange is next, and then Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Parks.
Commissioner, hi. Hey, in your commission, do you look at things regionally in the city, or like some commissions, like, say, the clerk will tell you, the Public Works Commission has regions that they all look, do you look at things regionally, or commissioners assigned regionally at all?
Um, we haven't divided our commission up that way at all. What we've done to try to increase our consciousness regionally, we have actually traveled around the city to hold meetings, so we've held a meeting at Van Nuys, we've held a meeting at San Pedro, and we intend to continue to kind of, every so often, hold a meeting somewhere, and then through that-
I mean, as a advocate for, as a commissioner, it's not set up where, let's say you look at the West Valley, you look at the South Side, or-
No, no, the way we've divided substantively, you know, so I have more of a planning background, so I focused on kind of the relations between the planning department and DOT, and the planning function within DOT, and-
Right. Well, just to get real quick on this here, and Mr. Rosendahl may wanna listen to this, the other day I went out to Bundy, and I was on Bundy in West LA, and I came back Olympic to survey the situation for the proposed reverse lane matter on Pico and on Olympic. Have you reviewed that at all?
The reverse lane?
Right. Or some say the one-way in a Pico and Olympic, but it's really reverse counter-flow lanes.
Right, um, well, I mean, I have opinions on it, I mean, I don't know-
Sure, yeah.
I think, I think it's definitely worthy of study. I think there's, one concern I have is that not to create a freeway in the middle of the neighborhood. I mean, these are places with viable commercial districts and neighborhood feel, and, you know, we don't definitely wanna do anything in LA to kind of create that kind of an environment. But at the same time, you know, it is a crosstown route, Pico and Olympic. You know, one thing, I would like to suggest that if we're gonna study that, we should study Wilshire, Pico, and Olympic, and incorporate Wilshire as the transit-oriented alternative to those two streets, if we're gonna, you know, make them one-way. If you look in San Francisco, you know, Market Street, which is kind of our equivalent of Wilshire, it goes right down the middle of the city, and all the major buildings are on it, and it's completely transit-oriented, it's very difficult to drive on it. But then if you go one block south of it, then there's a one-way street, huge, five-lanes going one direction, and another block south of that, there's a huge five-way going. So it's like the cars are encouraged to stay on these streets, and then we take one other street that we really make for buses and pedestrians.
Well, I think when you look around the city, whether it's, and I know I was on all over the city yesterday, but I went down Flower Street, and I know in Mr. Parks' district, you start having that construction happening for the extension of the Expo Line, so Flower is not as available as it was anymore. You go out Wilshire, they were doing work on Wilshire. I would just say to look at this, and on Wilshire, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm just saying for your benefit here, my analysis, although be it rough, between Bundy and Overland is the biggest challenge. Between Bundy and Overland is the biggest challenge, and I'd find it tough to go through the challenges east of there. The streets are narrower, Pico's narrower, Olympic has some heavy, long streets there in the Koreatown area. But anyway, look at it, be vocal, and hopefully come up with solutions. We look to work with you, work with the community.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. This is a reappointment, correct?
Yes.
Your bio didn't show up in our report, can you just tell us a little bit about your background, just briefly?
Oh, sure. So I'm an attorney and urban planner by trade in education, and I spent five years working with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles as an attorney in the South Central office in the Community Economic Development Unit, and my specialty there was actually helping community groups and neighborhood groups from low-income neighborhoods to participate in planning processes.
I don't mean to cut you off, because my time is ticking, but how long have you been in the commission? Two years?
It's been a year and a half.
A year and a half. Now, in that year and a half, was there any discussion at the commission level about local circulators in our dense transit-dependent areas? Has there been any discussion about putting forth circulators through shuttles or any other vehicles to help offset the overloaded bus system?
Um, you know, honestly, we haven't had that discussion-
You have not?
We've, you know, I know that the LA DOT runs the Dash service-
Right.
And some of those are considered as local circulators, and I definitely would be open to, you know-
Can I challenge you on that?
Sure, sure.
I would like to see us, as councilmembers, get more information from the commissioners on how to alleviate that stress, the high cost of gas, the overburdened bus lines. One way to cause relief would be to implement these local shuttles in these dense areas. For whatever reason, it's been the culture of DOT in the past ten, fifteen years, that we always prioritize the automobile, that we always think that we could alleviate by just thinking of the bigger scale, when we miss what's right in front of our noses, which is the local markets in dense areas. I use the example often, when we were able to work with the community, and they decided where the Pico Echo Park route went, and that became the most traveled shuttle system. The ridership is so high, it carries the ridership for maybe two or three other lines, I've been told. Now, we're in a position, through you as commissioners, to direct the department to look at these local circulators with a more intense eye, to create that relief. Now, our new Department of Transportation director is great, she's relatively new, but with the help of the commissioners, I think we can move a little bit quicker, given the crisis the working folks are feeling because of the high cost of gas.
Right, I think that's a great idea, and I would definitely follow up, you know, with the commission and your office and try to find out-
I'd love to see one day in the commission report that our director, newly appointed, Mr. Carson, was able to direct the department to look at local circulators as a way to create revenue and decrease the pressures felt by the transit-dependent people.
Will do, thank you.
Look forward to that, thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, and then Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm very happy you're stepping back up to the plate to serve the people, it's very good.
Thank you.
Couple of quick things. Today, coming in, the ten was in total gridlock from the west side, there was an accident somewhere between the ten and the one-ten, so I got off at Crenshaw, and I took Venice Boulevard in, went all the way to Main Street and came down. Those of us who are familiar with our gridlock in the eleventh district, try to figure out other angles to move around. My district is the most congested gridlock district in the city. North-south gridlock, east-west gridlock, it's a big deal, we got lots of things to do. I'd like to get your sense, first of all, this one-way business on Pico and Olympic. Tommy mentioned it to you, I'd like to hear again what your present thoughts are of what Supervisor Yaroslavski threw out to us.
Well, I would say that, I think that it's worth studying. I definitely think that there's a lot of problems with it. The main thing that I'm concerned about is not doing something that would completely ruin the quality of life for the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods and the commercial districts and that kind of stuff. And I'd also like to see it be considered in conjunction with Wilshire, so that we can have a comprehensive kind of corridor approach that would include maybe turning Wilshire increasingly over to pedestrian and public transportation in return for maybe, you know, if we're gonna move more people on Pico and Olympic. But I do think that the east-west corridor in LA is clearly needs attention, and if we can figure out, if there's a solution there that can work, I think that's definitely worth looking into.
Okay, well, I'm looking for the DOT report on that. My constituents have pluses and minuses for it. The minuses are the business districts, like Mr. Weston's district in Koreatown, have some real issues with it. There is the issue of drive-through, when you can't go the right way, impacting neighborhoods. There's the issue of seniors trying to get from Pico to Olympic and make the mix. It's also the issues of Santa Monica and the other cities participating with us as well in this issue. One of the suggestions given to me was maybe you put cones up in the morning, and take one of them, and make them three or four going in, and three or four coming out, and keep some flexibility. Any of that impact you in your mind?
I think, I think that's, you know, I mean, that is a really great idea, I mean, to have some kind of flexible, I know, again, in the Bay Area, the Golden Gate Bridge does that, and they're able to, you know, make some more-
Could you hold my time, please?
That, you know, that can be successful, and having a flexible approach, and then maybe that doesn't have to impact upon the neighborhood quality nearly so much, because it's not such a, you're not permanently making it into this huge five-lane thing, it's just addressing the problem at the time that exists. I definitely think that would be something worth studying. I, I'll tell you my bias-
Please.
Is that, is that, you know, generally speaking, I think how we've gotten into this situation is that we've solved traffic problems that move more cars through a given small segment of our city at some given time, and then, but that doesn't really solve our problem, because they just move to another place, they just move down, and so, you know, it's like you have the bottleneck, and you clear the bottleneck, and then the bottleneck moves two blocks down. And so I think, you know, all of the solutions that really basically just involve maybe trying to move more cars through a certain given amount of space and then a given amount of time, are really not ultimately gonna get us what we want. We really need to figure out how to get more people out of their cars, and to me, that really, it's not, you know, about, you know, people's individual choices, and that they have a car culture, and all this kind of stuff, and people love their cars and everything like that. I mean, I don't really buy all that. I buy that people will take whatever's quickest, most convenient, and most affordable to them to get to where they need to go, and if we can provide a quicker, more convenient, more affordable way to get places, people will take advantage of it. We just have failed to do it, and, and so the vision needs to be just a greater ride share for other modes of transit in Los Angeles, and it doesn't have to be huge. I always tell people, people, I, you know, I get, I tell people on the Transportation Commission all the time, and they're always like, oh god, that's never gonna, you're never gonna be able to do anything, LA is just totally screwed. And I say, well, just think about, like, traffic on a minor holiday, like President's Day or something. You know, not that many people take off, most businesses are open, there might be a ten percent reduction of the number of cars on the road, but you feel it. You can feel a ten percent reduction of traffic in Los, so if we could get ten percent more people just to do something else other than get in their car, by themselves, and drive to work in the morning, I think we would actually experience a real change in our way of-
Let me give you my vision, and tell me if I'm crazy or not. I think eighteen million people in Southern California need to get the political leadership from the governor and the county supervisors, our mayor and other mayors into a room, and come up with a summit on mass transit discussions. We need to put on the wall a twenty-year plan that shows we need to raise a hundred billion dollars through gas taxes, through bond measures, through getting the federal government off of its butt into supporting Southern California, and that twenty-year plan should show the Expo Line going to Santa Monica, the Red Line going Subway to the Sea, my Green Line into LAX, and be the first north-south congestion relief west of the four-oh-five. We need to take Anaheim and have a high-speed rail, my colleague is for Magliff, to Ontario, so that you can fly out of there. We need a regional transportation and aviation plan. We need the buy-in of all the leadership, we need to put it on the wall and show our people over the next twenty years, year one through five, we're doing this, year five through ten, we're doing that. Because I'm telling you, I am fed up with the gridlock, that's why I ran for office. I found eleven million dollars in some pots, I'm doing simple things, left-hand turn signals, synchronizing lights, and some planning on other issues, that's all I can do at my level. You at DOT can only do so much at your level. We need the county, the city, the region, and the state. The governor has said to me, we need a hundred billion dollars. We need that leadership, we need to tell the presidential candidates to assist us in this. Once we put the plan up, people like me, who wanna have a cup of coffee and get on a light rail and come to work in the morning, not what I go through, and everybody else goes through. That kind of leadership we need. So I look forward to you on this commission, providing some of that leadership. I look forward to a summit that says, here's what we must do as a region, and here's how we're gonna fund this going forward, and make sure every politician's on board, and if they're not, we get rid- And if they're not, we get rid of them, out of office. We get rid of them. And bring people in who are willing to realize that mass transit is the solution for Southern California. So take that leadership, you look young and energized, and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Well, I mean, I can only echo what you're saying. I mean, one of the things that I've discovered that really upsets me is that if you talk to a lot of transit officials and you say, "Is the traffic going to be worse in 20 years today than it is now?" To a T, they're going to tell you yes. You know, and if I was, if I was, if that was my job and I, I'd probably kind of want to quit. I mean, if, if, if my job was to make transit, the traffic situation better, and if somebody asked me honestly, "Do you think it's going to be better?", and I can't say honestly that it is, then it's, what am I really doing here? So I think what you're saying here is exactly right. Let's get our eye on a solution that, that at least if it's not next year, I mean, we, you know, we clearly can't solve it in one year, but that we will get to something, and I think people will support that. People will, if people thought that we, unfortunately, it would work...
People are fed up with being in gridlock. The good news is this, Propositions 1A, B, and all that that we approved two years ago has taken $19 billion into the transit mix. We got $1.3 billion just now to start doing things with the 405 and the HOV lane. So there is progress being made. The people will support bond measures and taxes if they see the money going directly into the mass transit systems that we so vitally need. I'm very hopeful about the Expo line, it is moving really fast, thanks to the leadership of everybody involved in that issue, and Wendy Grul on the committee as well. But all of these things have to be clearly explained to the people, because as sure as you're sitting there and I'm standing here, the next three to five years are going to be worse, if you can believe that, than what we're presently having, which is already a gridlocked disaster. So with the right leadership and with giving people a format and a timetable, we'll get there. And I look forward to you providing some real leadership with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Parks is next, then Mr. Zine. And just to remind everybody, we have three more commissioners and then general manager as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank you again for putting yourself back for this nomination, and we certainly, the fact that you're in the 8th district and also basically drive those same streets that we're trying to correct, and I'm sure you hear, just like everyone else, the issues of the residential neighborhoods being overwhelmed because the major streets don't work, and then the issues of whether our bus system really is providing the best service in the fact of the rapid buses versus the regional lines. And hopefully, at some point, when the MTA gets their metro connection process done to where we'll begin to see the longer routes with the MTA and the regional right routes by the local communities, we'll get more of a synergy there. And so we hope that you will stay engaged to ensure that the city's views are heard in that area. And again, I would, one transportation issue that I throw at you that we need your assistance on, MTA is looking to eliminate the 442 line on Manchester that goes to the freeway and brings a lot of government workers downtown, it's the only one. And there's a discussion going on between MTA and DOT as to DOT accepting that responsibility. Certainly, there's a cost involved where MTA wants to give them the FAP, but it certainly doesn't basically cover all of the costs. I'd like to make sure that the commission's involved because we have a, although a small group, but a very dedicated group of public transportation riders that are going to be displaced. And what they're being asked to do is eliminate that line and take the stairway on Manchester to freeway, which is not the best location, nor is it the safest location or the cleanest location, to get their alternative. And so we'd ask that you take a personal interest in seeing how we can resolve that 442 issue so that there is some working relationship with both the city and MTA. And again, we'll extend to you again, because of your background in development and your interest in overall planning, a more active role in a variety of issues dealing in the 8th district as it relates to the variety of large projects and just the ongoing zoning and community plan process that we're going through. So appreciate you being here, looking forward to working with you. But we do ask your assistance on that 442 line, see if we can bring that to some conclusion.
All right, well, thank you very much. I mean, as you may know, I worked at Manchester and Broadway, and so I know that.
You know that?
I know that area there, and it's, yeah, I could see it's not an easy thing to make that transition up that stairway there, you know, especially when it gets darker in the year and stuff like that. So, yeah, I would definitely get on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. The San Fernando Valley is in need of some traffic improvements. We have congested roads, we have the 405 coming from the 118 down to the 101, the 101-405 is the most congested corridor in the country. So when you're looking at transportation issues, it is citywide, every part of the city is plagued with the same issue. People are frustrated sitting in traffic seven days a week. I know from my experience driving from the West San Fernando Valley to City Hall, it takes an hour and 15 to an hour and a half without rain, without a collision. So it's very frustrating. So it's all areas of the city. And the car manufacturers want to sell cars, Petroleum Ministry wants to sell gasoline, and the rest of us suffer in the consequences. On another note, I've got some residents who were recently sighted at a holiday, it was a major holiday, I think it was Memorial Day, where they had guests over their home. And it was one of those no-stopping, no-parking, certain hours, gridlocked, tow-away zone. And this was a major holiday, which we don't have business operating, people come over, have a barbecue, enjoy the nice warm weather in the summertime. They were all sighted, and some of the cars were towed. What, and I was going to bring this up in a motion, but since you're a new commissioner and you don't have a whole agenda yet to worry about, if you could bring this up to the commission, what they need to analyze is the enforcement policy in those zones when it's a major holiday, businesses closed, we don't have the major congestion on our local roads. Not to enforce those sections on major holidays, Saturday and Sunday, most of the time, they don't enforce. And we have a major holiday on a Wednesday, for example, the Fourth of July is coming up. Why are we going to be impounding cars and siding in those tow-away zones when we don't really need it on those major holidays? So if you can, as a commissioner, bring that up to the commission, and maybe they have to examine that policy. I know we deploy personnel and the skeletal crew throughout the city on major holidays, but it just doesn't seem practical or reasonable to go out and cite and impound cars when you don't have traffic flow, you don't have street cleaning on those particular days, yet DOT has a policy of enforcing if those signs are posted. So I think something from the commission and a policy modification is in order because it defies reason and common sense, whether taking that enforcement action on, again, major holidays when there's no necessity to do that. So I'd bring that to your attention as a new commissioner, to put on the plate for a policy within the Department of Transportation.
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you. I definitely, I would agree, it's, doesn't, if the purpose is an anti-grid lock enforcement and to enforce it on a major holiday, it seems, seems just to kind of take advantage of people's unweariness of, you know, most of those kind of signs, I would expect usually say they don't apply on weekends and holidays.
Right.
And so it seems like it'd be somewhat of an oversight that we would have basically taken advantage of people, you know, to enforce. I would agree, that doesn't make a lot of sense at all.
So if you could follow up with that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
And I'm sure the people in the valley who've been cited for that will be greatly appreciative.
Yeah, thank you. And invite them to come and give testimony to our commission as well, we welcome guests.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And with that, why don't we go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment. Round of applause for our commissioner, please. Next commission appointment, please.
Item 28 is the reappointment of Ms. Rita Walters to the Board of Library Commissioners.
Councilwoman, welcome. It's always a pleasure to have you in chambers. And with that, I'd like to recognize the Chair of Arts Parks Committee, Mr. Tom Labonge.
This is one of our great leaders of our community, a great commissioner, a former councilmember, a former member of the Board of Education, who cares passionately about children, about all people, young and old. And what an honor to have you here. Give us a little update, and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Councilman Labonge, who happens to be my councilperson.
Thank you.
And I appreciate him very much.
Thank you.
By way of update, I would just say that the library continues to operate in an outstanding fashion under exemplary leadership. And we have Ms. Fontaine Holmes here, whom all of you know, and know the very outstanding work that she and her staff accomplish on a daily basis in the libraries throughout the city. The libraries are throughout the city, in all the districts, wonderful new buildings, people are enjoying them, readership is up. We're just looking forward to the future and building on the foundation that has already been laid to continue to accomplish great things for this city.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. You're a very special person, I thank you. Your son David's here with you, and it's nice what you said about Fontaine Holmes and all the staff at the library. I'm just proud of the library system, what it's done for so many people, and it's certainly helped me. And I always like to say, I don't know if Mr. Zine remembers, his book is A Child, but the child that I, book I remember is Mike Mulligan and His Steam Shovel with Mary Ann and on the Coinga Branch Library, and Tony Shea was the librarian then, I think. But anyway, that's enough. Rita, thank you for service to Los Angeles.
Thank you. It's really an honor and a pleasure for me.
Mr. Alakon is next, and then Mr. Parks.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back to you. After having watched you grill so many commissioner candidates when we served together, I was just wondering what questions we should ask of you?
Well, I think Councilman Labonge asks them.
Well, I know that you're very passionate about libraries, in all aspects of libraries. I remember the security was a major issue that you raised numerous times on the city council, and I hope you'll continue in that vein. Unfortunately, many of our libraries struggle with security problems. But I just wanted to stand and say thank you for continuing your service when you certainly could be doing other things, and your experience will be a valuable contribution to the Library Commission, so congratulations, and I urge my colleagues to support.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Alakon. And on the security issue, I might say that the libraries are among the safest places in the city. And that does not mean that there are never any problems, it just means that there are fewer problems in our libraries, and our librarians really struggle hard to keep it that way.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks is our next speaker, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Walters, I just want to say thank you. Number one, every time I pass by your center on Manchester, I'm just so proud to see your name on that, and it's a small, I think, tribute for what you have given to this city. Thank you and Fontaine for giving us that extra library on 39th and Western. I drive by that almost every day, and to know that it's going to be double the size of the one it's replacing...
Right.
Plus, it's going to be at the second level of the LEED standards, and it's the first LEED standards government building that will be built in that area. And so all that came about due to the great management on the library bond to, I think it's kind of historic. Generally, we have bonds and people are concerned, did we get everything built that we're supposed to? Here, we built everything and then came back and said, "We can build two more." And so we're the beneficiary of that, and just appreciate your personal involvement and interest in what you've done in the past, but certainly your leadership on the Library Commission. So thank you for coming back.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Parks, and of course, I have to claim you and Councilman Weston as my honorary councilperson.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
The issue of security, the Office of Public Safety now provides security for the libraries. Is that program working out as you anticipated? I understand the library security activity has been taken over by Office of Public Safety?
Yes, that has been accomplished, and as far as I'm aware, I believe it's working very smoothly. The library commissioners asked me to serve on that joint, I guess it's a mini-commissioner advisory body to that consolidation in Office of Public Safety, and I believe it's going very well.
Okay, because I know that that was an issue on the merge when Office of Public Safety was involved in these different departments and trying to take over the security and make it safe as we want for all the patrons of the library. So as long as that's working fine, that is a major issue.
Yeah, well, you know, all mergers require some time for things to smooth out, but I believe it's working very well.
Okay, so nothing's, nothing's been brought to the commission of any negative nature on that, as far as the aspect of OPS involved in the security for the libraries, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, all right. And I want to welcome you back also, it's good to see David back here at City Hall.
Thank you. He enjoys being here.
I know he does, I know, we enjoy seeing him too. Best to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you so much, Councilwoman, for continuing your service with us, and thanks too for the great work you're doing on the Silver Lake Library, and it's wonderful always to see you at so many of the openings and your engagement and involvement. So we look forward to another term, anticipate it'll be an unanimous vote, but let's make it formal. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you for the votes.
Next item, please.
Item 29 is the reappointment of Ms. Marilyn Grunwald to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Great. Again, like to recognize the Chair of our Arts Parks Committee, as soon as he is assisting the nominee. Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, and wonderful to see you, Marilyn. Would you like to take the two commissioners together, who are for this commission?
Uh, yeah, I think that'd be good, because they've been waiting, David.
All right, Mr. Clerk, the other one as well?
Item 30 is the reappointment of Mr. David Wolf to the Commission on Disability.
Okay, I'll give councilmembers an opportunity to ask both the nominees any questions about the commission. Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, members. Again, these are two fine commissioners who deserve reappointments, they're passionate about this. When there's been problems, they've contacted me, we tried to help secure the solutions to those problems. So maybe Ms. Greenwald, if you'd like to speak first, and Mr. Wolf after that, that'd be appropriate, thank you.
Thank you very much. Either Ms. Grul is our next speaker? Either the nominees like to say anything first?
Okay, David, you want to say anything?
Um...
Okay, good, they're, they got our vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul?
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and it's my pleasure to stand actually on both behalf of David Wolf and Marilyn Grunwald. Marilyn and I have known each other for a while and has been an incredible advocate wherever she goes, not only as a commissioner, but in her own life and her other activities, and I really appreciate that. And I know Tony Carter, who had to step out for a minute, wanted me to make sure I said the same thing about how much he's appreciated your commitment and your willingness to serve on this commission. But Marilyn and I have had on several occasions an opportunity to talk about the importance of her position, particularly in reminding people about the importance of not only disabled access, but a way in which to recognize the disabled community's part of this whole city and the voices that you represent. And so many people do not have a voice, and you are that voice for those individuals. I just want to thank you for your commitment, not only on this commission, but what you do every single day is really a wonderful addition to this city, and I appreciate your time and commitment in doing that. So thank you very much. And to your husband, who I know is a frequent visitor with you to many events, and thank him for his commitment. And for David, David has been here on numerous occasions, testifying and advocating, and has been a longtime member of this commission. I just want to say thank you, David, for what you do. And I know that your father here, who has also been a strong supporter of what you do. But both these individuals are people we should be very proud of their willingness to serve the city and their willingness to stand up and talk about how we can do better in making sure that we address the issues of our disabled community. So it's really just a special thank you. I don't know if you want to add anything, but thank you to both of you for serving on this commission, and I wholeheartedly support their appointment.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Grul's words, that we understand we're coming into a new era, and we're really doing very well, seen great strides in the last, in my first term, and hope to see even greater in my second term, and enjoy working with you all, and I know that you all do try and do your best to look into this important part of civil rights.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your support, and thank you to Councilman... Thank you very, very much for your support, and thank you to Councilman Gruul for your kind words addressed to me. I would like to state that the, that I was asked by a child, if I was a city councilman, and I turned around and I said, "Not quite." But with the amount of work that I have to do, I sometimes think that I am. What I meant to say to that child was that the needs of the disabled population cover every area of life, just as with the general population, except we need special support systems. And it is up to all levels of government to make sure that those needs are effectively met, especially down here at the local level where people see it the most. And that is what I effectively tried to do during my time here. You know how effective and how active I am at working with each and every one of the people around this horseshoe. I am effective because I care not only about people with disabilities, but all the citizens of Los Angeles. And I thank the members of the City Council for trusting me with the confidence that they place in me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we feel our commissioners are an extension of our City Council, and so, we'll take that as a compliment, that you acknowledged that young person, that you were kind of in that way. So, clearly, you can see both of these individuals are a wonderful asset to our city and as commissioners. So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to both of you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruul. Any other members wishing to be heard? Let me thank both of the nominees as well, not only for their great work, but for their friendship and the way that you have been able to continue, as Ms. Grunwald said, to push forward this very important civil rights area. We have much to do, and good intentions only take us so far. We have a lot of work as well before us. So, with that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 27 is the appointment of Ms. Olga Garay as the permanent general manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs.
All right, and 4, 28, and 29, and 30, let's send those forthwith if there's no objection, please. And with that, ask our general manager nominee to come forward, and I'd like to recognize again, Mr. Labange, our Chair of Arts Parks Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Fourth with hot number 13.
13, if there's no objection, we will send forthwith also.
Right there. Everybody gets comfortable right there. Hold on a moment there. Olga Garay, one of the great nominees, soon to be general manager of Cultural Affairs by Mayor Antonio Villagoso. We're very proud. Let's give her a hand of welcome, because she came across the country right here. This new general manager will energize the Cultural Affairs Department to expectations that will really please all members of the community. Had opportunity to visit several times in the office, had an opportunity to drive around the city a little and talk about art, and show her some art, and learn a little, but she has great passion. And Olga, if you could just tell us a little about your background and how you're going to help us make the A in Los Angeles bigger and brighter, because it's going to stand for art.
Thank you there. Well, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm thrilled to be joining this wonderful team, very dedicated, very professional team of both elected officials and staff members in the department and in sister city departments. I come to Los Angeles from having been the program director for the arts at the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation for the last eight years, also a consultant in the performing arts, working with Lincoln Center Festival, with National Performance Network, and several other major national institutions. Prior to that, I was in Miami for 25 years, at Miami Dade College, and at the Metro Dade Cultural Affairs Council, which is a similar body as the DCA here. So, I had the opportunity this weekend to serve on a panel for the L.A. Town Halls. Over 800 arts supporters showed up to the panel, which was held at the Japanese-American Cultural Community Center, and I'm pleased to say that the energy there was extraordinary. People in Los Angeles are ready to roll up their sleeves and really make this a world-class department, and we're ready to meet those expectations. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Olga, thank you very much. This is a great new appointment, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange, our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
In your experience in working in the implementation of programs, in this city, we have large populations of children, youth, living in poverty, yet we see our, for example, our art fee that we impose upon developers, and we have these citywide programs. Have you ever had the opportunity to look and study at how we address the issues of need when development doesn't occur in the areas in which you have the poverty, yet occurs in areas where it's considered desirable? Our fees are paid out a certain way. Have you been able to assess or implement how we are able to funnel resources to where it's needed the most?
Thank you for that question. It's a very interesting question, because I agree that there is an issue
Please hold my time.
Issue of access is critically important to the department. We want to make sure that all Angelenos have equal access to the cultural resources of this great city. There are very many ways to implement programs. As a matter of fact, when I was first hired to work in the arts, I was as program officer for something called Neighborhood Arts Program, which was a funding mechanism to support art-making in neighborhoods throughout the greater Miami area. So, I'm very much part of that conversation, very much part of believing that everybody, every single person in this, in this community and this country has creativity built right into their DNA, so I'm very committed to making that happen for everybody.
I had an experience where a developer paid into the art fees. He wanted to keep his art fees on his site because he didn't want it to go to the general-wide program.
Right.
The citywide program. The department had already allocated that funding to some other project that essentially was not found in the district or in the area in which that development occurred. That's a policy that I'm hoping we could visit, only because if this body could agree that the playing field needs to be leveled out, given that the density is so high in other areas, art is appreciated by everyone regardless of age, ethnicity, and/or economic status, how we, how do we wrestle with that disparity?
Well, I would say that one of my fortes is to raise funds
Please hold my time.
And to, and to increase resources. So, one of the things that I hope to do is to bring more national, both public and private funds to the community, and a lot of times, the, certainly the foundation community where I was most recently based, is very interested in just the kind of programming that you're talking about by serving underserved areas. So, that's definitely going to be one of the challenges that we're going to tackle right away.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You don't have the humidity here that you have in Florida, because I remember visiting that place, and I asked people, how do they survive? They say, we go from air conditioning, air conditioning, air conditioning.
That's right.
So, it's a nice metal climate here. Out in the San Fernando Valley, we do have Arts and Culture, Valley Cultural Center. We have a city facility called the Madrid Theater.
Right.
And it was occupied by Valley Cultural for three years. They didn't complete the project, so I want to put that on your radar because I think it's out for an RFP, and I understand, talking to the city folks, is that it's booked and it's doing well, it's not draining the city budget. So, I don't know if it'd be advantageous to keep it in operation as long as it's not dark, it's in operation, and it's not draining the budget, to keep the city operating that particular Madrid, because in the past, it was running a deficit, it wasn't having bookings, and if the crew there has turned it around, I am very responsive to say and leave it as it is, as long as they've got activities taking place. So, I just wanted to put that out for you, because I know that we don't have a lot of the city facilities in the valley when it comes to cultural affairs, but we do have that, which went through a lot of changes over a number of years.
Yes, thank, yeah, I think that one of the great advantages that the department has is a plethora of really wonderful facilities that serve the community. So, it's not only grant-making that we do, but we have these wonderful facilities that provide services directly to audience members and to community members. So, we're going to be taking a look at all of the facilities and coming up with some recommendations for you all to consider.
Okay, because I know that they were doing an RFP and not inclined to give it to a private vendor if we can keep it in-house with the city operation and keep it out of the red and keep it occupied with different activities.
Thank you. We will take that into consideration.
Great, thank you, and welcome to L.A.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, then Ms. Han, then Ms. Gruul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're delighted that you're stepping up to the plate, and I'd like to first invite you to June 24th at 8:00. We're going to flip a switch, and we're going to put up the Venice sign, and it's the 100th anniversary of Venice, and we'd like you to be there. Venice has been one of the Renaissance cultural hubs of this city historically. Frankly, in the last few years, they haven't gotten the support and the attention that they so rightly deserve. The murals and the incredible work that Judy Baca has done with murals. We have formed a new group of concerned citizens about art. We're starting a new Renaissance in Venice. First, I'd like to invite you to the 24th, and then I'd like you to meet with the leadership in my district of citizens who are committed to the arts and to culture. We have so much rich culture. Venice is over 100 years old now with a great, great, great set of traditions. But the meeting I want to bring you to will be a combination of all of the folks who have merged in the last 10 years into significant positions on the arts. The goal will be not only to get your buy-in to things, but your support on a lot of the projects that have languished in Venice that we need to resurrect, and with your leadership, I look forward to it.
Oh, thank you. I've known Judy Baca for many, many years, so I really am very thrilled to be able to work with her and Deborah Bede, her general manager, and it's just going to be a wonderful opportunity to renew some old ties here.
I don't know if you've seen those city buildings there, but Spark is in one of the buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Took me forever to get enough money to fix the roof. It's been leaking in there. The old jail, which is now part of the Cultural Arts Center, but we have a lot going on, and I look forward to your leadership and working with my community.
Thank you so much.
Bless you, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Han, thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Han is next, and then Ms. Gruul.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome
Thank you.
To Los Angeles. I'm just going to follow up on Councilmember Zine's questions about the Madrid Theater. I have a wonderful theater in San Pedro, the Warner Grand.
I went to this.
Yeah, it's one of the last remaining fabulous movie houses. What I'm going to ask you is, do you think we as a city should be in the business of running those theaters, or should we attempt to contract them out with Niederlander or House of Blues? I think this is such a great community resource in San Pedro, it's such a great treasure, but I feel like it is very, its potential has not been appreciated with city staff just sort of
I would concur.
So, I'd love to hear your take on it.
Yeah, I would concur. I think that it would be disingenuous of me to make a blanket statement as to whether we should or shouldn't be in the business. I think that it's, a lot of it pertains to each community and the resources that exist or potentially exist. So, I think that what would make more sense is to look at each facility by facility and make recommendations to you all. I did have a chance last time I was here to go to the Grand Warner Theater, and it's a jewel. I mean, it's just gorgeous, and it's just one of those places that, you know, my heart was aching that we weren't going to be, that we weren't more proactively deploying it. So, I talked to Lee Sweet, he's very energetic. He really wants to make a difference. So, those are the very kinds of things that I want to do during my tenure here, is to really just bring a new, fresh air into this, into this department.
Right, and Lee Sweet's been great, and there's a community group, the Friends of, who, the Warner Grand Vision Foundation, that raises money to help. We've completely restored the seats in that theater.
Yes.
But we kind of
I promised to buy one.
Very good, I bought four. But we really think that the Warner Grand could be this sort of performing arts theater, really in all of the harbor area that could draw from the Palos Verdes Peninsula to Long Beach. We're completely reinvigorating our waterfront at the harbor, so this could be, I think, a very important theater in that region of Los Angeles, but it doesn't seem like it's getting there with just being under the auspices of the city department.
Well, you know, like I said, hopefully, this will be a new day, and I know that the harbor is interested in partnering with us, so I think that one of the things that I want to do in my administration is to really look at the resources in other departments so that we can partner for mutually common ground, and, you know, definitely count on y'all's support to make these things happen.
Thank you. Well, welcome, and a shout-out to Kathy Jones-Iris, who did a great job as the interim, still, she's come down, okay, she's come down to San Pedro to meet with a lot of my group down there to talk about how we might get Cultural Affairs more engaged in the harbor.
I would love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Gruul is our next speaker.
Thank you very much, and I want to add the accolades Ms. Han had for Kathy Jones-Iris and for Karen, who served during the other period of time. One of the important aspects of that interim period was getting the books in order, so to speak. And I think that's a very important, as a member of the Budget Committee, just a little part, that is to make sure that as we are held accountable to the public as to how the money is spent. That being said, we don't invest enough in arts and cultural affairs that we need to in the city, and so, I hope that you will challenge us on that and to see and look at best practices in other places, and how we can do more public-private partnership. We view some of our own civic funds and others, Patty Wilson, who I think came and introduced herself to you, to help with some of the youth programs that are out there, because we know the best way to ensure we have a community, a citywide effort to support the arts into the future, is to ensure that our young people understand the importance of arts and culture to our city. And we are getting known across the country as to, of our cultural aspects, because people thought before we were a wasteland, and in fact, that's not true, in the many things that you've heard today and talked about, whether it be through the programs we fund, whether it be through the facilities that we own across the city of Los Angeles, to utilize that in a way that is going to be able to inspire young people and to get them going forward. And so, I think that, I know Al Nadal was here earlier and spoke highly of you, which speaks volumes for many of us who had the pleasure of working with Al over the years, and the fact that he looked at doing things differently, and how can we capitalize on the diversity of Los Angeles that is so critical, and to use that to help us as we move forward. So, I just want to say, welcome, congratulations. Look forward to sitting down with you when you officially come on to, in the city of Los Angeles, and it's days like today, in others where it's been absolutely beautiful, although, you know, Florida's nice, we feel, we don't have that humidity. So, thank you. I know you're up for the challenge, look forward to working with you as you start on this new endeavor. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our final speaker again is our Chair, to wrap things up.
I think this is, again, for an eye vote. I really appreciate you accepting this as the mayor's recommendation. And one thing I did want to mention that we talked about, which is so important, is the connection she would like to make to the various schools, the art schools from throughout Southern California to put more power. There's many great universities and colleges from Occidental to USC, UCLA, and some of our community colleges as well, Cal State Northridge, Loyola Marymount, and I'm sure I missed a few in there, including my very own Cal State LA. So, Olga, we wish you well. Call for an eye vote and forthwith on this matter, and also to add to it too, I'm sorry, Olga, I thank Kathy Jones-Iris for hearing the mayor's call and stepping in for the time to, in this, in between times. So, eye vote all the way, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
General Manager. We'll send that forthwith without objection. We've had two items that are, I know, quite urgent. Mr. Parks asked for 47 out of order, and then Mr. Rosendahl, I know, has folks here that are here for item number three, so we'll take those two items next. Number 47, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Detective Dixon to come up, and also Mrs. Marcia Holmes. Colleagues, we have a $50,000 reward motion asking for information leading to the arrest and conviction of a very young person that was a homicide victim in the 8th District. And I'll ask Detective Dixon to give us his overview of what the circumstances were.
Councilman Parks and members of the City Council, on August 25th, 2006, at approximately 9:45 a.m., Ashley Cheval had parked her car in front of 4316 Southwestern Avenue. She had one acquaintance in the car and two acquaintances were outside of the car. They had been talking approximately 20 minutes, when three male suspects approached them with guns drawn. They began to fire at Ashley Cheval and her acquaintances. After the shooting, they fled on foot to an awaiting car and drove southbound Western Avenue. When the Los Angeles Police and Fire Department's personnel arrived, they found Ashley Cheval fatally wounded and two out of the three acquaintances seriously injured. I had been assigned to investigate this murder. To date, we have interviewed numerous witnesses, and also we have followed up on as many leads as we were able to gather. We have processed the evidence that we recovered at the scene, and to date, we have not been able to positively identify the suspects who committed this heinous crime. It is my belief that a monetary reward of $50,000 might induce witnesses who have information to identify these suspects may come forward. Your support in the City Council motion would greatly be appreciated. At this time, I'd like to introduce Marcia Holmes, the mother of Ashley Cheval.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, Ashley Cheval, my granddaughter Cheyenne Copeland, and my community. The person who murdered my daughter and opened fire on their car on August 25th had no concern for the consequences of Suction Act. The act was done, as Officer Dixon stated, during the early morning hours, when there were many people in the area, many witnesses. I think that the person who committed this crime and committed this murder has other consciousness, and they would do it again. They would not hesitate to kill someone else's child. The only reason I'm able to function and to be here is because I'm still numb. I shared a body with Ashley Cheval for nine months, and it still feels like it never happened. I'm numb. The only thing I can feel these days is love. I would please implore you to authorize the reward monies for the arrest and prosecution of the person who's responsible for this murder. I would also ask anyone in the community of Los Angeles in the area of 43rd Street and Western to please step forth anonymously, if you must, in helping us to solve this crime. Because at this point, I'm beginning to wonder what face it's going to take, you know, on a flyer before people begin to make a connection and get involved in our community. But I do know one thing. The officers that I'm very grateful to work tirelessly trying to solve these problems in our community, and they're very aggressive. But to get, to really solve these problems, it's going to take the assistance of the communities. And thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes and Detective Dixon. And the community should contact Detective Dixon at 213-485-1383 for information. Also, make one correction. Because of the other victims involved in this case that were also injured, the reward is $75,000 to be asked to bring information that would lead to the arrest and conviction of the suspects involved with injuries to three people and the death of one. And so I appreciate both of you being here. I'd ask for an eye vote and forthwith.
Thank you. Can please open the roll, Madam Clerk, on this reward motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved, and without objection, we will send that forthwith. Thank you very much, Ms. Holmes, for being here. Thank you, Detective. With that, I'd like to recognize next, Councilmember Rosendahl, and we have two speaker cards as well on item number three. So you tell me which order you'd like to go, Mr. Rosendahl with the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask city staff to come up first, and then the community. I'd like to ask the police and the fire and DOT to come on up and share with us some good news. Colleagues, about four months ago, I was at a community meeting with the Venice Canal folks. And at that meeting, a gentleman had his young daughter in his arms and said that he had dialed 911, and the fire department and the police department had trouble finding where that gentleman lives with his wife and his daughter. That raised the level of safety in my mind as to how do we make the canal so easily figure-outable that if the police or the fire need to go on an emergency, that they're able to do it. So we got the community together in a series of meetings. They worked very hard in putting together a plan. And I'd like to ask the three of you gentlemen to take us quickly through it, and then the community to respond. Mo.
Good morning. My name is Mo Blorfoshan. I'm the district engineer, Department of Transportation, Western District Office. Just wanted to say that we fully support the street name changes in the Canal's area. I've been the district engineer for the last eight years, and I'm very familiar with the area. There's always been confusion when it comes to the street name changes. You got the houses actually have the canal addresses, and then you got the courts, which are the back of the houses and the garages, and they also have the same, same names. So you got the Sherman Canal, and you got Sherman Canal Court, and that comes with the confusion. So with the street name changes, all the courts will be changed to Court A, B, C, D, and E, and that would simplify the confusion. So again, we support that, and once the street names have been approved, our department will fabricate and install the signs.
Well, we thank you, Mo, for your leadership. Would the fire department give us a sense of comfort that if a call comes in and you need to dispatch someone to a scene, how clear it will be for the fire department to respond?
My name is David Yamahada, Battalion Chief for the Fire Department. I've been a member of the department for over 30 years, and response time is very critical to our department. As a former apparatus operator, a driver of the truck, I understand how important it is to know the district, and being able to get to an address in an expedient time is very critical to providing the service to the community. There are times when resources that are outside of a district will have to respond to an area, and if they're unfamiliar to that area, it makes it very difficult to find an address. In this particular incident or this street signage, there's some confusion in terms of size of the canal. By simplifying it and making it letters, it's going to be a lot easier, not only for the members that work in that area, but for individuals that respond outside of that area into that community to be able to find exact locations and addresses and provide a better service to the community.
Now, Fire Station 63, is that the fire station that directly--
Exactly, yeah. And sometimes, due to the area, Fire Station 63 may not be available, so you'll have to get the outline, resources to come into that area, and you may have individuals that may not be familiar with that area.
And also, the truth is, is that the address for your mailing and all will stay the same. It's basically the ability for us to not be confused and to know where an incident might have taken place.
Exactly. So in terms of the impact to the community itself, it's going to be very minimal.
Captain?
I can say we're all in agreement here.
Introduce yourself, Captain.
I'm Captain Justin Eisenberg, and I'm the patrol--
And I might say, welcome--
Thank you.
--to the Pacific Division. You've been on the job about a week or two. You were with me the other day at the tsunami public hearing and showed real leadership. Welcome to the Venice area.
And the next Navy guy, Mr. Rosendahl.
From me?
And a former Navy guy.
Oh, terrific. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm in agreement with the Fire Department and DOT. We all are on the same sheet of music on this issue. This is a very confusing area to navigate, but this proposal would make it much more understandable, and it would help us in terms of response time. The area involved is RD 1441. It's serviced by Atom 11. We try and get to our calls within seven minutes, and there are instances where sometimes outside units do have to come into Pacific and handle our calls as well, based on our demands at any particular time. This would be almost impossible for an officer from another area to figure out, let alone an experienced Pacific officer that's familiar with that terrain. But the solution would make it much more reasonable, and we support it.
Thank you very much for that. And as the channel television camera comes down a little bit, they can actually see these signs that are so clear and so simple that that's what we need when we have a crisis or a situation. Mr. President, I'd like to ask the community to come on up and to make their comments right up to the mic right there.
Nadine Parkos was our first speaker, and after that will be Beverly Weiss.
Good morning. My name is Nadine Parkos, and I'm a Canal's resident, and I'm also president of the Venice Canals Association, which is a neighborhood association that has been serving our historic Venice Canals community for more than 30 years. Our membership represents almost three-quarters of the 400 property owners in the Canals. Because this safety project affects every resident in the Canals, over the two and a half years we've been working on this, we sought and received a buy-in for the court name change from a strong majority of those who will be personally affected by the name change. I wish to thank the council this morning for considering this motion before you, especially Councilwoman LeBlanche and Rosendahl, who has been so helpful in shepherding us through the process, and hope you too will vote yes in support of the motion that we feel will make the community a safer and more accessible place to live and visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Beverly Weiss?
Good morning. My name is Beverly Weiss, and I'm a resident and owner in the Venice Canals and a co-chair of a committee that formed this proposal. We went out to, had several community groups. We had a Public Works hearing. We had a lot of input, great input early on from the police and the fire department, all recognizing this as an issue not just for anybody to find our homes, but it became very clear as we got community input that people have had strokes, heart attacks, choking, and the emergency vehicles, responders have tried very hard to get there. They'll find themselves at the end of a court and have to back up because they're very narrow. We think the solution is a wonderful one. It'll be very simple, and we really appreciate Bill Rosendahl and his office and LAPD and LA Fire Department, Department of DOT, and all the community residents who have really worked hard for the past two and a half years, not to mention it's been an issue for over 15, to get it to this point. So we want to thank you very much for hearing our proposal. We hope it's approved today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Usually, this goes on consent, and nobody knows who's watching this, half the things we approve. I wanted to make this special so the community could see that when everybody works together and gets in the room, it can be done. One of the most exciting moments for me was sitting in the room, and actually, in the room, a constituent came up with refinement of the word. Everybody bought into it, and it became a real positive process of the democracy at its best. So I want to thank all the participants, especially the community, and especially, of course, the police, the fire, and DOT for their leadership. We now have a situation where we're comfortable that if there's any issue in that canal, the police and the fire will be able to get there, and I dare say the residents will be able to find each other. And I ask my colleagues for a yes vote on this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Hey, I just wanted to rise, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for this. I was at that meeting we had. You're a great leadership as chair of Public Works out there, and they, very nice library out there. And I just, give the names of the streets again. They're just beautiful names, if you would. I want to hear them again, one more time.
Sherman Canal Court would be Court A. Howland Canal Court would be Court B. Lenny Canal Court would be Court C. Carroll Canal Court would be Court D, and Virginia Court would be Court E.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, congratulations. Took a long time, but I know some people expressed the very grave concern they had of making the call and not getting it right. And if, just like last night, you had a fire in Santa Monica, I'm sure the local 63s was in Santa Monica--
That's right.
--fire, and the move-up company may be not known, you know, so it's going to solve that problem. Good job, Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, what I'd like to say to that, Mr. LeBlanc, because I agree with you, is these kinds of issues that make me excited about being a member of this body as a public servant, because when we heard about the issue, we cut through the red tape. Everybody got together on one bandwagon, and that's government at its best. But thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, for your leadership. It's terrific. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
That will go forthwith without objection, and that goes through. Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. Next item, please.
Item eight was called special by Councilmember LeBlanc.
Mr. LeBlanc, item number six. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Parks called that special.
Mr. Six, excuse me, item six by Mr. Parks.
Sorry. Mr. Parks, we have item number six.
We get to go to six.
Oh, yes, Mr. Weiss?
There's some items that I wanted to make sure went forthwith. I think it's 25 and 43, if you're right.
Okay, 25 and 43 without objection. We'll send those forthwith. And now, number six for Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have the city attorney come forward, please? Colleagues, this is just a motion that many of us have talked about for years, about the 60-day response on reward motions, and Deion took this up for us, and it's made some changes. Just like to make everybody aware, because we have the ordinance here today, and give everybody an explanation of what to change and when that might be effective.
The ordinance before council today simply extends the expiration date within which council reward offers are effective from the current 60 days to six months. It would be effective generally approximately 45 days from today.
Forty-five days. The other issue that was, we had talked about, and they commented it, because it wasn't part of the ordinance, but the notification system, the city clerk's going to notify the department and the office at some point prior to the expiration of the 60 days?
Yes, that was discussed in committee, and I believe that's the intention of the clerk's office.
Okay. And colleagues, in this year's budget, there is money put in, the city clerks, to create a motion monitoring system, so every council office doesn't have to do an independent search or manual monitoring, and this will become a part of it so that we can track these types of motions that roll over in the sense of, that we have to renew. And so I think the six months will probably reduce the city clerk's workload significantly and allow, and I think it also at the committee, they mentioned, it fits very comfortably in the police department's advertisement on their website and such, so that there is a longer period of them to advertise a reward motion. So I'd ask for an eye vote and forthwith so that we can get this in place and get this administrative workload reduced.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. It's nice to see a new Assistant City Attorney down there at the table. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Thank you. That is approved. We want that forthwith? Okay, without objection. Next item, please.
Let's try item eight again, Mr. Councilmember LeBlanc.
Mr. LeBlanc, item number eight.
Thank you very much. I can ask Jim Yonada, one of the top people over at the Department of Water and Power in the Water Systems Section, just to give a brief report. The success of six weeks ago in the effort that Thousand Acre Fire in Griffith Park was to improve water system through May 2006. Jim, get comfortable there. I'm going to ask someone from the CLA staff.
Someone from the CLA staff.
Thank you so much. Jim, give us a quick report, if you would, please.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Jim Yonada, Assistant Director of Water Quality and Operations for LA DWP. Just a brief history of the Griffith Park Water System. It was very aged and in poor repair, and back in the end of, end of the '90s, we received a water quality violation. LA DWP then took over. The water system was tasked to upgrade it along with do the O and M. Subsequent to that, the LA DWP has already replaced 13, I'm sorry, 130,000 feet of distribution main. We've installed three new water tanks. We've taken about 10 old tanks out of service, and about half of the 20 older pump stations are no longer functioning. We still have additional improvements we need to do, which is build one new water tank, rehab two more, along with doing other upgrades at some of the existing pumping stations. As a result of all the work that the department forces have invested, we were able to successfully fight the Griffith Park fire that happened a few weeks ago.
Six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago. So it was an effort that was successful. However, we still need additional enhancements in there to ensure for the long-term reliability and redundancy-- and redundancy of the Griffith Park water system.
As well as of the Lee's Park. So thank you very much, Mr. Yonada, thank Marty Adams, especially for the water at Dante's View, thank Jim McDaniels for his great work and Mr. Deaton, who we always appreciate. Thank you, members.
Let's just formalize this and take up eight and nine together, is that all right? Because we were talking about number nine, I believe, there. So is there anything on eight you want to add or can move those two together? Eight is, Mr. Clerk, if you can just read us the two.
Item eight was a report regarding the coordination of volunteer efforts for the restoration of Griffith Park and then item nine was the reporting on the existing water system.
We'll vote on those together, is that all right, Mr. LeBlanc?
I'll hold the one and I'll continue it because I don't see anyone here from Recreation and Parks.
Okay, so we'll continue eight.
Yeah, we'll continue eight, we've got Recreation Parks here, but I want to thank Water Power for the water.
And number nine, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item ten was called special by Councilmember Parks and a substitute motion has been circulated.
Mr. Parks, are we good to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
I just changed some numbers and amounts.
Right, as long as the count numbers match. All right, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item eleven was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, we have item number eleven, why don't we hold that on the table? Or, Mr. Reyes, would you like to be heard on that item right now? Okay. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee and Councilmember for the First Council District, Mr. Reyes. And the Head of the CED Committee of NLC, Mr. Reyes.
When do we start tab dancing? Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I first want to thank the staff and all the different parties involved in establishing a new identity for McCarthy Park. For years, we've been trying to elevate the stature of this park for what it is, one of the few locations that was literally treated as a maintenance yard for a long time, but with the advocacy of the community, today we are viewing it as a place where we can create relief for the most dense part of the city. Having this personnel here will ensure that we could create an environment that'll help us get back to that place before May 1. Get to a place where we can actually have functional programs, where we can actually have locations for children to play, children who were restricted to fire escapes and hallways of overcrowded apartments, parents who could look at a green spot, enjoy their family. These are families who do not have the means to go to Disneyland or pay for the gas to get to the beach, pay for the parking, but actually enjoy their own neighborhood. This staff that we are looking at will promote the kinds of programs that will offer our children and those families that sense of relief. So for that, I thank you and I'm hoping we can continue to reassess how we address our facilities and to start factoring in the use of these facilities, given the number of people that are actually frequenting these establishments. So again, thank you so much and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item nineteen called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, Ms. Hahn, item number nineteen. Ms. Hahn?
Ms. Hahn, Ms. Hahn.
Item number nineteen.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me see, this is about...
This is the $550,000 for the Bandini Canyon Trail.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members. I wanted to highlight this because this is a wonderful project in the harbor area and I really wanted to give a shout-out to the mayor for agreeing to make this a priority for some of the reprogrammed CDBG monies. And this will fill a gap in the harbor area at Bandini Canyon and this Green Belt Park will actually link our brand-new welcome park that we're building at the end of the Harbor Freeway. It will connect it to Bandini Elementary School and then to the hiking trails of the Peck Park Canyon in the Bandini Canyon area. So it's a really great project, it kind of connects everything, it fills this funding gap that we really were trying to find. This is a project that's being constructed by the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, so it's really a wonderful thing. So next time we have an off-site down there, we'll make sure that you drive by the right place so that all my colleagues can see what a wonderful open space, Green Belt, well-planned project this is. Again, thanks to the mayor for making this a priority in the reprogramming dollars and this will be a really nice open space, green area for the elementary school, for the people who hike the trails and really for all those who exit the Harbor Freeway at the end and find it to be a very dilapidated ending of a freeway, this project will help make it a very beautiful welcoming entrance into San Pedro. I would ask for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. There are no further speakers in the queue, so, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Next order of business?
Item twenty-four was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, wait, let's continue this item until tomorrow.
Today's the deadline on this matter.
Today's the deadline? Would you like to hold it on the desk to see if he comes back to chambers? All right, next item.
Item thirty-eight was called special for carts from the public.
Sharon Brewer in the San Fernando Valley. All right, I did call Ms. Brewer's name and I've been advised that she is not out in the Valley Council Chamber at this time. All right, there are no speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Item fifty was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. Is there someone from Building and Safety and Planning Department here? Colleagues, this is an item for an applicant for a beer and wine license in Highland Park. I sectioned two forty-five this after the area, East Area Planning Commission had looked at this. I know it's rare for us as a council to section two forty-five beer and wine license applications, but there was some confusion as to what was the outcome from the East Area Planning Commission and we wanted to correct their intent, so that's why we sectioned two forty-five this. And I wanted to ask Michael O'Grann, our zoning administrator, in your view, since we sectioned two forty-five this, what has happened and why was it necessary to correct what came out of the East Area Planning Commission?
Thank you, Councilmember. Michael O'Grann, Chief Zoning Administrator, City of LA Planning Department. The item before you was an appeal of a zoning administrator's determination on a conditionally use permit for beer and wine that was subsequently overturned by the East LA Area Planning Commission. Their determination had some errors in it when the staff wrote up their verbal determination and conditions into a written determination. There were some errors that were noticed by your staff and those were subsequently propped to forty-five by your office and that motion went before the Plum Committee last week. At that Plum hearing, committee members, I'm sorry, commissioners from the East LA Area Planning Commission were there and testified that your motion fit the intent of their original conditions and clarified some of the mistakes that were in the written determination from the East LA Area Planning Commission. And all those conditions are before you today and have been incorporated into conditions of approval for the project to ensure safeguards for the area where it's located.
Great, thank you very much. Anything from Building and Safety?
Well, Dave Lara with Building and Safety, Councilmember. We actually, looking at the pre-existing conditions and the parking alike, there's just, the only thing we could opine at this time is just that the non-conforming use does exist, in which case we do not require any additional parking. So in this new case, there's actually no change in the parking necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to clarify, the applicant has a voluntary condition to provide some off-site parking through a letter and that was consistent with your motion as well as that of the East LA Area Planning Commission, even though it's not required because it is non-conforming use. The applicant realizes to be a successful business and be a partner in the neighborhood that they do have to provide that parking in the best extent they're available.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to thank you for the additional time and effort you put into this and, colleagues, I'm simply asking these questions in the open because I know it's unusual for us to do a section two forty-five in a beer and wine license application, but I wanted to make sure that the motion that we're doing today conforms with the intent of the East Area Planning Commission, what they wanted to do when they came out. So there were some errors in the final written report and that's what we're doing here, simply correcting that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. The day this came to Planning Land Use and Management, I was in Sacramento dealing with our waste issues, but I wanted to ask you, the impact of this business on the residential side, where is it most? How do we see it evolving and where do we see the impact most when it comes to the parking?
Please hold my time. Michael O'Grann, City Planning Department. The difficulty with older buildings like this, this restaurant's been in existence for a number of years, the permit goes all the way back to the early nineteen hundreds, I believe, Mr. Lara's research demonstrates that. The difficulty is in that time, the automobiles weren't as prevalent, the parking was a lot less if nonexistent. So when you have older buildings and commercial areas like this, the impact tends to spill over onto other adjacent uses, which in some cases can be residential. This applicant has volunteered to try and provide a way to have off-site parking that would minimize that impact. The difficulty is, we feel that this use isn't intensified enough to make that a condition and a requirement of this site. In the past, they've had similar beer and wine sales here in the history of this site, even though currently that's what their request is, that's before the committee. But it's important to note that this use currently exists under our non-conforming rules and regulations in terms of parking and so any kind of impacts associated with the restaurants will be very similar by the addition of beer and wine. So I think that's something that can be looked at.
Okay, so, Councilman Weezer, I just wanted to address this point, so the majority impact of the overflow of parking will occur in whose district?
Well, your district.
Given geographically?
Yeah, your district's right on the borderline. In this case, I believe it straddles both districts across the street, I believe.
So the establishment's CD fourteen.
Correct.
The impact will be in CD one?
It's possible that there could be some impact from the restaurants, not just this one, but the entire corridor in both districts.
But geographically, you would say, more than likely, people park on that side of the street to get closer to the restaurant?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of the pattern of parking, but I think that's a fair statement.
Now, I raise this, Councilman Weezer, because I'd like to make a friendly amendment, one in which we instruct DOT to investigate the feasibility of establishing a preferential parking district in the residential neighborhood adjacent to 5924, 593 York Boulevard and to report back to Plum Committee in sixty days of their assessment. From what I understand in the history is that it's been thirty years as a bar/restaurant establishment, that the non-conforming use is because they want to add on these new features of selling beer and wine and so our jurisdiction is limited to that act, am I correct?
Correct.
So based on the fact that I have a fairly high density on that side of York and your district is right across the street, the impact of preferential parking, I believe, is something we should look at, given the conditions here are voluntary, is that correct?
Correct.
Could we ask the applicants if they're here, if we can speak to that, if I may? Are they here?
Sure, yes, they are here.
Could you come to the microphone, please? Just give us your name and your address and who you represent.
My name is Scott Robbins. I live at the subject site, which is on the second floor, it's my primary residence, 5924 York Boulevard.
Now, when we speak to voluntary parking, what did you have in mind, given that we passed this today, it's not going to be required, it's going to be based on your ability to make it happen, but in fact, there could be a day when you say, I can't do this anymore, it's not feasible, therefore, I'm not going to do it?
I feel that because this neighborhood is in transition from a state of economic, you know, undesirable lack of economic activity, I feel that as the property owner, I should be in charge of making sure that parking is used on the days and times when it's necessary. I do have to get, I do have to constantly keep the approval of the city government in order, because we do have reviews every eighteen months and then again in five years. I will act responsibly and always get off-street parking when it is economically necessary based on customer load. Right now, there's no indication that we will have a profitable business there, based on the last six months' worth of performance.
How long have you been there now?
We've been open as a restaurant for five months now.
Five months. Again, I'd like to support a whole new spirit, a different trend that's upward for this corridor. York Boulevard has been longing for that type of investment and I believe it's necessary. At the same time, right next to you, our densities have been going up. I have two or three families living in those one-two bedroom apartments. I have three or four generations living in single residential homes right behind you.
Yes, many of those residents are my employees too, who walk to work.
So that's great. So again, if we can have this study, we can look at the real numbers and share that reality with those who would object or fight this project because of the impact they feel on the overspill of parking and the lack of parking for their own residences.
I have taken initiative to get off-street parking, which I feel I should manage. The problem with the government mandated parking is they choose the wrong days, they choose inactive hours. I feel that as the business owner, I can continue to offer mitigated off-street parking and that will lessen the effect.
Again, I want to support you to be successful because it's a positive all the way around. On the other hand, I need to be accountable to the residents who are fighting to figure out, where do I park? I have to walk two blocks just to get to my house because there's not enough parking and that's the struggle we have within our districts and I'm going to support my colleague, we're neighbors and we have to figure out how to come up with solutions. So we'll be asking for a study on preferential parking and look at the cost issues that are aligned with that. So hopefully, you support on that?
Great, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Weezer, you're up, you're up. You're the neighbor.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Reyes. I think you're correct because I think this is one of many other businesses that we're going to see sprouting up on York Boulevard. As you know, that corridor is way underutilized. What this gentleman has done here, I think, has taken an old rundown building and has provided an anchor, in my belief, to revitalize all of York Boulevard and we need to, your and my office need to work a lot closer together because as you know, the way the lines were drawn, I represent the business corridor there, but you represent all of the south of there, which is all residential and I think this will help alleviate some of the concerns from the residents. I've also, just to let you know, working with a planner to give us some ideas of how we revitalize all of York Boulevard, there's a lot we're coming and your amendment here is going to help us start thinking about possible ways that we lessen the impacts on the local residents. The local residents, mind you, want that business corridor spruced up, at the same time, we have to be open and honest with them about the additional impacts that may create for them, such as impact, such as parking, et cetera. So I think look at this preferential parking as a good way to go about and start thinking ahead.
Well, I think the three-hour hearing they had spoke to the level of anxiety that's there, at the same time, a level of opportunity that we could realize. For whatever reason, my district is the alleyway and you have all the commercial, so maybe we can talk about maybe splitting that down, York commercial, we can carry our mutual weight in bringing York back to life. And it's good to speak to a planner from Princeton that helps us look at these difficult issues in a comprehensive manner. So I'd like to make that friendly amendment to direct DOT to investigate the feasibility of establishing a preferential parking district in the residential neighborhood adjacent to 5924, 593 York Boulevard and report back to Plum in sixty days.
Point of information.
The planner from Princeton and the planner from UCLA.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, President. Would that hold up this whole application, or is that a separate item that could take on a life of its own?
Mike Legrand, Department of City Planning. That would be a separate motion that would not be tied to this application, but it's something I believe the councilman feels would be necessary, that this application brought to life, that they would go separately, and DOT would report back within 60 days on the feasibility of that and the interest from the community on doing that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Very well, okay, let's open the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one that's been introduced, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Last Friday evening, Cellarino Reyes was fatally shot near 1300 South Mateo Street while he was driving his vehicle. Immediate action is required to offer a reward to remove this suspect, who remains a danger to the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Very well, any question on the findings? Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a ridiculous occurrence. This homicide took place on June 8 of this year. Forty-year-old Cellarino Reyes fatally shot at 1300 South Mateo Street. He was driving his vehicle. He was shot while driving. His car collided with a tree and then turned over. The passenger of the suspect vehicle stayed inside the car while the driver got out and began continuing to shoot into the sunroof of Mr. Reyes's vehicle. The suspect then entered Mr. Reyes's vehicle, searched for property, then returned back to his car and fled. This person is still out there and has no regard for the sanctity of human life. The detectives at Newton asked for our quick and fast assistance in getting a reward out there to see what we can do to simulate any leads or information to bring this perpetrator of this heinous crime in as quickly as possible. So that's the urgency of this, and I ask for an aye vote.
Very well, there's no speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's do that fourth-wit. One more vote? That was on the findings, now one more vote on the matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And do that fourth-wit. Next item, please.
Item 24 is being held on the desk for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, I understand you have a settlement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this opportunity. Colleagues, this is another real strong feeling of mine about how the democracy can work. Item 24 is an appeal on condo conversions at 816 Bundy Drive. Over the last couple of hours while it's been sitting at the desk, the parties have gotten together, and I would like at this point to ask Arnie Lauffer to come up and say a few words, and then Ben Resnick. Please.
Thank you for, I'm sorry, this is a fair hearing, matter requiring that council members heighten attention.
Identify yourself, please, sir, and proceed.
My name is Arnie Lauffer, L.A.U.F.E.R. I live in Apartment 7 at 816 South Bundy. On behalf of Barbara Singer Mies, Barry Plumlee, Richard Thober, Mike Marvin, and myself, we have agreed in principle to the points that have been discussed with Councilman Rosendahl and the representative from the developer, Xenon, their attorney Benjamin Resnick.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Good afternoon. Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Mangles Butler and Marmer representing Xenon Corporation, the property owner. I want to confirm that we have reached an agreement with the tenants, which will be hand-delivered this afternoon. I do want to point out that from the beginning, the condo conversion always met the requirements of the condo conversion law, but Councilman Rosendahl felt that that was not enough or sufficient to protect the tenants. So on appeal, not only are we complying with the new ordinance and the new ordinance requirements, but certain of the tenants who have seniority, certain of the tenants who've been there a long time, are getting some unprecedented time to stay there by contract, and they're going to be well-protected. And so this will not be a conversion that happens all at once, but probably over time. I want to confirm that we have an agreement. I want to thank the tenants and the council office for working so hard to bring everyone together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. And colleagues, this was, again, a strong expression of the democracy. I want to thank the tenants. If you could all come to the mic so people can just see who you are, that's Richard Lauffer and Barbara Singer and Barry Plumlee and Richard Thober and Mike Marvis. I want to thank you for being strong and focused. And, Mr. Resnick, I want to thank you and your client for being open for a thorough and strong discussion that meets two needs. One, it allows the condo conversion to happen, and most importantly, from my perspective, it takes care of the tenants. They're not just being thrown out on the street, and that was one of my reasons for condo conversion moratorium historically. If we can work together, both developers and community, we can come up with a deal that makes a lot of sense. I want to thank you all for participating, and I ask my colleagues to vote unanimously in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The matter is now before us, number 24. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
You can applaud. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, there was an amendment that was circulated on item 20, but that item was already adopted. Do you wish to reconsider that?
Reconsider? It's up on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, next item.
Actually, the amendment is now before you.
On the amending item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, next item.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Post it in referral.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weston requests to be excused Friday, July 6 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks approve.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, June 22 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn.
Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Friday, June 22 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Alarcon, Mr., Ms. Perry.
And Councilmember LeWondt requests to be excused Tuesday, July 3 for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Weston and Ms. Perry.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements? Jan is on.
No, adjourned motion.
Okay, no announcements? Please stand for adjourned. Mr. Parks, announcement.
Well, in 8th District, we have a meeting for the project status for the Expo Light Rail Line on Wednesday, June 20 at Darcy High School, 6:30 to 8:30. Also, just for the business community, the Turning Point Urban Business Expo 2007 will start Friday, June 22 at the Convention Center in the West Hall at 10 a.m. Also, the St. John Well, Child and Family Center will have their grand opening at 6519 8th Avenue on Tuesday, June 26, 9 to 11 a.m. And that should conclude the 8th District announcement.
Ms. Perry.
Very much, Mr. Chair. I am making this announcement on behalf of Council President Eric Garcetti. Today is the birthday of An San Su Chi. She is 62 years old. In 1988, when Su Chi emerged as a leader and as an internationally known face of the struggle for democracy in Burma, no one could imagine that she would spend so much of the next 16 years in prison and under house arrest. She is not the only person who is locked up in Burma. The regime holds over 1,400 political prisoners behind bars where they are severely tortured and live in inhumane conditions, even for those outside of prison. The regime's pervasive military intelligence and secret police network make the country a modern-day prison without bars. To quote An San Su Chi, "We are prisoners in our own country." Ms. Su Chi was given the Nobel Peace Prize in 1991 for her work for a more peaceful Burma. She remains an inspiration for all who struggle for justice.
Thank you. And late breaking news, the Police Commission just approved Chief Pratt for another five-year term. That just in from the Police Commission. Mr. Cardenas? Not a big surprise, I can tell.
On a lighter note, I was a few days ago in my capacity as a councilman, actually it was on Saturday morning. Greg Smith was present, the mayor was present, and Wendy Gruel. With the three of us councilmembers present, Greg Smith had done a check presentation. It's a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit called Operation Gratitude, where they put their care packages addressed individually to soldiers who are serving us in the armed forces. And Greg Smith had given a check, and then Wendy Gruel said, "Well, I'll match it, I'll match another $1,000," and naturally, I followed suit and said so. So a couple of the volunteers approached me as I was helping to put packages together, said, "Can you ask your colleagues on the council if they would go ahead and match that $1,000?" Hello, everybody? I'm just kidding. All of a sudden, everybody's reading their materials. If my colleagues on the council would offer to match that. Again, it's a 501(c)(3), it's not politically based at all. They give care packages to individual soldiers, not only exclusively of Los Angeles, but people can actually submit the name of a soldier, they will put it in the database, and they will get a care package out to them. We were there to announce the 250,000th package that's gone out. It's totally volunteer, not-for-profit, and it's a wonderful organization, so I just wanted to follow through. I would encourage it. Thank you, Mr. Reyes said he'll match it. Thank you very much. If you ever get a chance to go, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And let me end with this, the most beautiful part about it is, they get school-aged children to do little thank-you notes, I-love-you notes, or what have you, just very innocently saying, "I hope you're safe, come back home soon, thank you very much." Each one, a unique letter goes into each one of the care packages. So it's a wonderful organization. If you get a chance to go volunteer, please do thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for meeting that request. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, where can they get information on that? People who want to donate?
You can get it from my office. It's Operation Gratitude. It's physically in Greg Smith's district, but I kind of came across them three years ago and been involved, so.
But Operation Gratitude out of your office?
Yes.
So call 311, Councilman Cardenas office.
No, don't call 311, Councilman Cardenas. You can call Councilman Cardenas's office. We'll be more than happy to give you their website and their phone number or what have you if you want to communicate directly with Operation Gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, I just want to first say I support that effort. I support our soldiers, our men and women, but I still feel we should do everything in our power to get out of that situation. But on a more positive note, this past week, I was with the National League of Cities as chairman of the Community Economic Development Committee for National League. We're discussing issues in how we can bring back resources to the cities. This city has suffered about $19 million in cutbacks. It's been felt by our childcare centers, our social services, our senior centers, our intervention programs, and we're doing everything in our power to bring forth language to resolutions that connects to the Department of Commerce so we can flow more resources for our cities. And I encourage my colleagues to participate in their respective committees, if involved in National League of Cities, because we need to let the new Congress know that a change has to occur. We have to bring back our federal dollars. We pay a lot into our federal taxes, and we don't get back what we pay into the federal coffers. So I encourage my colleagues to continue advocating with the National League of Cities.
No other announcements? Please stand for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions. Ms. Hahn.
Thanks. This is really sad, but I want us to adjourn in the memory of Devon Harris, who was only 15 years old when he was killed on Thursday in Watts in a drive-by shooting. He was coming home from Centennial High School in Compton, and Devon is the first homicide that we've had in Watts since February. We're actually sort of celebrating the fact that we've not had a homicide there. He was the cousin of a member of the community, a member of my Watts Gang Task Force. He works for the Housing Authority, Donnie Joubert. And Devon was the innocent victim of an ongoing dispute between rival gangs in Watts and Compton. He had left Centennial High School, gotten on an MTA bus. It dropped him off about 114th and Central, and the rival gang was waiting there and actually ambushed these kids that got off the bus and fired at them, and Devon was killed. Everyone who knew him described him as fun-loving, church-going, just a really good young man. He survived by his mother, Barbara Ann Pritchett, and his father, Dwayne Harris, his brothers and sisters, and numerous friends and families. We are really grieving in Watts. He was a resident of Nickerson Gardens, and services are pending, but this is a very, very sad tragedy. I'd actually like to follow up sometime, Bernard, with you and the MTA on what training our MTA bus drivers have when they realize that there is a tense situation going on, if they're able to figure out also how to keep our kids safe. I think safe passage maybe now might extend to MTA buses and our kids being at risk. I know, it's very sad, but I'd love to talk to you about that. But let's adjourn in the memory of Devon and hope that that doesn't happen anymore.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Donald W. Guidry, who passed away on June 14, which is Thursday. He was the husband of one of our presiding bishops, Carolyn Tyler Guidry, with the AME Church. He passed away at the VA Hospital while undergoing treatment for Parkinson's disease. His services will be held on Wednesday, June 20, 10 a.m. at the First AME Church at 2270 South Harvard, and interment will follow at the Rose Hill Memorial Park in Whittier.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Can I please? And I'd also like to say a few words.
Mr. Weston, did you want to?
Yes.
Ms. Perry and Mr. Weston also on that adjourned motion with Mr. Parks. No other adjourned motions?
I just wanted to add a few words about the husband of Bishop Carolyn Tyler Guidry, first female bishop in her denomination. In spite of her international duties and responsibilities and obligations, and being a role model worldwide, she had a very tender and loving and compassionate relationship with her husband, and always took great care to attend to his needs whenever you saw them out together. And she did it with grace and sweetness about her, and I know it's a tremendous loss to her, but just wanted to publicly say that it's rare that you see a marriage as strong as that, and that kind of love survives even death. And I just wanted to say to her publicly that there's a lot of support, a lot of love for you here in City Hall, and hope that all the love that you give out comes back to you and carries you through these very difficult times.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Thank you. This meeting of the City Council is concluded. We will return tomorrow on June 20. Good afternoon.